Recording in progress.
I'm Nick.
Nick, your manager. Nice to meet you.
I'll just be still observing.
I'll be doing most of the same.
All right, we've got a couple stragglers.
Mike, can you hear us now?
We can see the bar or something, right?
Yes, I can.
Actually, I used to be on a, this was a couple of years ago, I did work for years ago, they would have like wine and beer, they would just put out the whole.
My board meetings I used to run for our firm in San Francisco, I wish they there would.
Sit there and have beer and wine.
And I heard the A's over there, but I don't want to, that's a bad guess, right?
Sit over there, sit over there, over there. I'm sitting in the dice. All right. Good evening, everybody, welcome. Call to order the Spirit Town Council and Rock Creek HOA work session dinner for October 23rd. Start off by just saying thank you to the Rock Creek HOA for taking the time to sit down and meeting with us. It's been a while and it's good to always get together periodically and talk about shared issues. Also wanted to just thank you for the thankless job that you do serving the community. We know full well, serving the community is oftentimes a very thankless job. You at least get paid and fed.
You get paid a little bit, right?
Get paid a little bit, very little, but.
You get to file taxes, I don't have to. You're actually worse off than me.
Thank you for that. Why don't we go around the table, I know that there's some new faces around here. We've got a couple of people also participating on Zoom.
Would TH public be the right, that one they get on the wifi here? Would that be the right one?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, it's TH.
TOS, public?
There's TH public, which I'm guessing is town hall, but I could be wrong.
Uh, I think it was, it used to be TOS.
There's a TOS one, but I don't know if, oh, there's a TOS public too. That's the one?
That's the one. If it doesn't work.
It's about TH.
Well.
Okay, that one's, TOS public ask for a password. TH public doesn't, oh, they ask for a password too, because they both need passwords.
All right.
He's the one that doesn't need a password.
So far, I'm 0 for 2 so far. I'm 0 for 3 and 0.
All right, Matt's gonna help you out with that. Why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves and then we can get started. So I'm Mark Lasis, I am the mayor.
Hey, everybody, I'm Jen Cowan, council member.
Jason Segu, mayor of Port town.
Clay James, from the HOA.
Stan Jazurski, legal counsel for the HOA, and I was on Greenfield Council for eight years back in the day.
Kelly McKee, community manager for Rock Creek.
Rachel Stanton, HOA board member.
Andrew Crowley, HOA board member.
Nick Hartman, town attorney.
I'm Ryan, I'm Mike Foster, town council member.
And I know Neil is going to be joining us later. He's at an advisory committee meeting currently, he's double booked, so.
I see that's more important than this advisory committee.
At times, sometimes, it's hard to juggle priorities, right?
Yeah, no, I get it, okay.
All right, we've got a couple.
Is there anyone else listening in, by the way?
There's no attendees, we've got a couple panelists, so right now.
Yeah.
I'm there, Matt's there, Dylan Conti is a panelist, Alexis Bollin, Mike Foster, and then Leslie Clark.
Got it.
Nobody from the public is participating currently. But this is also streaming on YouTube, so people can be watching.
There was also a conflict too, there's a community meeting for input on the comprehensive plan happening right now as well.
Got it.
So people were expressing that they'd have to come back and watch the video because they wanted to see gold, so.
So we've got a couple things on the agenda for tonight, discussion of fence maintenance in Rock Creek, and then also discussion of the waste hauling services. Happy to go in any order and then open for anything else to discuss, so.
Fine, you ended the order you added in the agenda.
Yeah, all right, so why don't we start off with fence maintenance? Happy to let you guys introduce it if you want, or we can kind of give you an update on where we're at?
Yeah, so I, I think I have an understanding of where you guys are. I watched the August meeting, I didn't attend it, but I saw it on YouTube. I think the one thing that really struck me in that is that over the entirety of that conversation, there was maybe one sort of cryptic reference to the, the actual, you know, legal obligations of the town, how they came about, yeah, how the, the history of this dispute. And Jen, it was, it started with a question that you raised, actually, where there was a, there was some discussion about how to describe the town's obligation, and people kind of jumped on, we should call it painting. You then pushed back and said, you know, we, isn't it the case that in the past, we've done more kind of repair-like activities, we've replaced slats, things like that? And at that point, Mr. Magley said something to the effect of, yeah, well, that goes back to the IGA. And I think it's really important, if we're going to kind of get this resolved, if we talk about a little bit about how the IGA came about, what it requires, because from our perspective, that's really, you know, the key to who owns this obligation. And I wrote down these facts, and I apologize for just kind of reading from it, but there's, you know, a few to go through here. As I understand, when Rock Creek was founded, most of the perimeter fences were installed by the city. And.
The developer.
Right, well, my understanding is that the city actually installed them, because there's a note in your, in the staff memo you guys did in 2023 that says that they were installed by the city, but on, on homeowner property. Didn't that one?
That's not right.
Okay, in any case, the fences were up and they were financed, and the maintenance of them were financed by two special districts. That was left in place until about 2003, and at that time, the town put a ballot measure out that wanted to dissolve those two special districts. And at least the ballot, the, the language in the ballot measure says it was done for efficiency reasons. The ballot essentially proposed that there would be a mill levy increase and that the, those two special districts would be dissolved, and that was put on the ballot, voters voted for it. As part of that process, there was an intergovernmental agreement put in place, and that intergovernmental agreement did a few things. It assumed the obligation of the special districts, it created this new tax in the form of a, of a landscape fee, and then it laid out what the standards were that the town was supposed to deliver to, what the obligations were and what the service levels were. So with respect to fences, what that IGA says, again, IGA is an intergovernmental agreement, says it's an agreement of the parties to ensure continuity of service and quality in the level of service to be provided to the landscaping tracks. That existing level of service will continue to be provided to the landscaping tracks or exceeded by the town in the future. Exhibit E to the IGA then defines what that level of service is. And with respect to fences, it says that the town's obligation will be to monitor the condition of the open space perimeter fencing, and in parentheses, wood and metal, comma, and perform repairs as needed, semicolon, continue restaining wood and metal fencing on a four to six year maintenance schedule. So looking at the IGA, again, this is something that was, this, this arranged with this agreement, it, it's not some, something the town kind of drifted into and just started doing out of the goodness of its heart to Rock Creek, and, and I'm being a little caustic there, but that was sort of the tenor of several of the comments at your August meeting. There were several, and I can read one of them, that essentially said that this was just sort of a favor to, to, to the HOA. That's not the case, this was a formal voter-approved agreement that laid out what the town has to do and what the service level will be. It's not some informal commitment, it's not some favor, and on that favor piece, what, you know, I found really kind of concerning about the comments was that, you know, this is a fee that's been in place for 23 years, that the, all the citizens in Rock Creek have been paying, that was in addition to the, to the mill levy. The town collected, and it collected it for the specific purpose of doing fence maintenance, among other things. So this whole idea that it's just kind of, you know, the town had an informal responsibility, that it was just doing as a favor and could walk away, just isn't, is completely contrary to the history of how this actually came about. And the statements that, you know, I'm objecting to, and the reason I wanted to highlight this language, I wrote them down, so I went back and watched the YouTube video again, and this is just directly out of the transcript. One of the council members said, everything here about fence maintenance was as a favor to the HOA, so it's about time for the HOA to step up and do something. If they don't want to, fine, they can step up and do that anytime, they've advocated all responsibilities and they've not chosen to step up, they can go ahead and do this, and it's on them to step up and do it, not us to solve their problems. I don't want to get into trying to solve their problem for them, but I mean, we're, that's what they want us to do. Now again, the town created a fence maintenance obligation, they put a tax in place to fund it, they had a service level they were supposed to meet. They collected the tax for 23 years, and now the proposal that's on the table is to not do the fence maintenance, but I think the, the, the plan is to continue to collect the landscape fee. I'm not aware of there's any, any basis for collecting the fee other than the IGA. And the IGA, I mean, sort of, you know, contract law 101, I mean, Nick, your, the contracts on your, the contract books on your shelf are probably a little newer than mine, but contract laws haven't changed in about 400 years, so I'm pretty sure yours and mine are going to say the same thing, which is, yeah, contract rises and falls by the four corners of the agreement, you can't affirm the provisions that you like and disclaim the provisions that you don't. So if you want to, if you want to walk away from the obligation, you kind of can't keep the money too, and you certainly can't keep charging people for this service that you've then decided not to, not to continue to provide. So I was kind of hoping Neil would be here, because he was the one that made these statements, I guess my open challenge was going to be, please explain to me what the HOA has advocated here in terms of responsibilities, because fence maintenance has never once, in the last 23-plus years, been the responsibility of the HOA. It has always been the responsibility of the city, and it wasn't an informal responsibility. So that was a, that was my, my summary of the facts is I know them to be, I am perfectly happy to listen to anyone who says that my understanding of the facts is wrong.
I appreciate that, Clay, and don't disagree with much of what you said there, so. I think, I think there's, there's a couple of things that might need some clarifying, because I wasn't here in 2003 when, I moved here in 2014, so all of this predated, you know, my time in town and on the board. I don't know if, if we passed a mill levy at the time of.
It was on the ballot, we had a copy.
The dissolution agreement, because my understanding was that one of the reasons why the metro districts were taken over was basically to reduce the mills that the metro districts had assessed to pay for the infrastructure in Rock Creek.
There was a bond, if I believe that the mill levy was intended to cover.
No, that's not right. So the landscape fee was implemented by the special districts, and the town inherited when it took over the districts. There was a mill levy increase question for original town, because we had to raise the mill levy in original town. There wasn't a mill levy question for Rock Creek.
No.
So the mills that they were paying were already assessed by the districts at the time, which makes sense, because like when Rock Creek was being built, the metro districts already created, they go out, they secure debt financing, which will be paid back by the mills that are collected from taxpayers in Rock Creek.
However, there was another measure on the ballot, not just the mill. The ballot also asked the voters to approve dissolving the two metro districts and having the town of Superior take it over. So that agreement encompasses this landscape fee and the town taking over the landscape fee, so that whole matter was, went to the voters and was approved by the voters.
That's correct, and when the, when the town took over the districts, the mill levy was 22 mills for each district.
And at the time, is it, you were understanding that landscape fee covered maintenance and the fences?
It did.
It did, yeah.
Yes.
And then, within a year, we, the town lowered that mill levy to 8.
Yeah, the mill levy is not really an issue for us at this point.
The total landscape fee budget is, was just a little over $2 million.
Correct.
Currently, yeah, and the fence maintenance cost at the time was about 100, it, our fence maintenance cost when we were maintaining expenses was 125 to 150,000 a year.
I'd like to point out that in the, in the intergovernmental agreement, in the language that assigns the fence maintenance, it specifically says that the town is supposed to collect and add to the landscape fee as needed to maintain a reserve to continue its obligations. It is clear that the town did not raise that fee sufficiently to meet their obligation, and that's why we're here now.
We didn't need to raise the fee at the time because we have ample reserves.
Over the last 20 years?
Yes, we can show you.
But now you're saying you don't have. Well, but now you're saying you don't have the money. You didn't, you transferred that to some, to the general fund.
What the town is saying is we shouldn't, it's not the town's responsibility to maintain private fences. Well, again, and this is, I read the staff memo on this, and it's kind of interesting because there's a sort of a glancing reference to the IGA, then no discussion at all of what the obligations in the IGA are. And if, that specifically, as I read, it is not, there's a specific obligation to do it. It's the obligation to maintain the fences as they were at that time, and it's phrased specifically in terms of maintenance, painting, repair. And there are other, there are other provisions in the IGA that don't identify fencing specific that are sort of, here's what the service level is with respect to all the obligations we're taking on, that also refer to replace. And fences are not, are not carved out of that. And in that memo, you guys kind of just segue right from there is this IGA into no discussion at all of what the terms of it are, and then say, but you know, best practices of other towns are that you wouldn't do this. Well, I don't really care what best practices of other towns are. I care what did you guys commit to in this voter-approved intergovernmental agreement? And again, the town, the residents of Rock Creek have paid this landscape fee that was supposed to be apportioned to fences for 23 years. We also, you know, one reason that I wanted to have the meeting was at this last meeting, there were references to the fact that the, that the HOA board had, that you guys had reached out to us and there was a resistance to meet. There was a meeting between some of your members and some of ours back in February where this was discussed. I wasn't there. My understanding is that, you know, it was polite, it was cordial, there was not a sort of in-depth discussion around the legal obligations or path forward, but there was sort of an insistence that this was, this was an obligation the HOA needed to pick up. And again, from our perspective, with this agreement in place and the fact that, you know, the town, that Rock Creek has paid into the landscape fee, it's all well and good what best practices are, but you know, you kind of have to agree that this is what's required absent taking some further action. And I think that further action has to be more than just not funding it. But also, one of the reasons we didn't get together since then, and I'm not aware of any further reach out from the town after that meeting asking for a meeting with us, but I think there was an intent that a follow-up would happen. But in the next few, in the weeks after that, Matt, we tried over and over again to get from you guys information about what you had spent historically on fence maintenance and what had been initially budgeted for in the IPA, in the IGA, we were trying to establish and was there ever any kind of formula that broke out the various pieces of the IGA and what the town was responsible for. We called and called and emailed, and our manager had conversations with staff, and we got zip. We finally had to corral you guys. And even then, the initial response that came back was that you didn't have this information about, you know, what had been budgeted in the past. And finally, I think it took lawyer to lawyer discussions where our lawyer was basically, are you guys seriously telling me you don't have budget numbers related to what you were spending on fences and what had been allocated to it formally? And then finally, we got some information that showed that I'm not aware there was any actual reserve that was put in place to address the fences. Now, that should have been done for sure. And to some extent, I'm not blaming any of you guys at this table. You didn't set up, you didn't set this up. This was your predecessors who, you know, 23 years ago should have put a reserve in place where some amount of that landscape fee was put in place to, in contemplation of the fact that, you know, it's not that unforeseeable that wooden fences have a useful life that's probably right around 20 to 25 years.
It's past.
Yeah. And that's, and that's, you know, we've done some of that to try to figure out, you know, what would it take to maintain and replace perimeter fencing if, if you were sort of starting from scratch, starting today? But the problem we have, and this was another thing that kind of kept going through those statements at your board, at your meeting, that, I think it's just sort of a misunderstanding about what the HOA can do. Under our charter, we can't increase dues more than 10% a year. The only way for us to do that is by a 67% vote of the entire community. Also, you know, we can't, unlike you guys, allocate expenses among homeowners in differential ways. We are required to keep one fee that applies to every homeowner in Rock Creek. So I can't say, you know, we'll charge you guys with perimeter fences a little more, we'll charge other people less. So we don't have the power to simply take
Townowners.
Right. We can't simply just take this on and start funding it. The amount that it would take would exceed by a lot that 10% increase that we, that we're empowered to do.
Can I just go back to something you said? I just, one of the reasons we've discussed this more frequently lately is because the fences aren't holding paints anymore, right? And so we're at replacement point. And you made a comment that sounds like you're asserting that the contract says we're responsible for replacement. So I want to clarify that.
Yeah. Here's, I guess, and I want to make it really clear at this point, I'm speaking for me. I'm not speaking for the other board members. We haven't taken a vote on this. And I think when this has been discussed in the past, maybe even at the meeting in February, like I said, I wasn't there. I know that there's been legal-to-legal discussions about it. I think that the discussions have already been around continuing the current level of maintenance. And I'm fine with that as a sort of, you know, if we can get to an agreement that everyone can live with and that's, you know, reasonable and fair to everyone, I'm fine with that as a compromise. Me personally, when I look at it, if we were to get into a real dispute over this, I can read the contract language. And I would be saying, I really think that the position has to be that the town needs to do what it committed to in the IGA. And if that encompasses repair, it encompasses repair. If it encompasses replacement, it encompasses replacement. Now, again, that's, I'm not saying, you know, I'm pounding the table, this is what has to happen, but I think in terms of the obligation in the agreement, you know, I think
I'm just trying to understand what would have led you, like, is there some specific verbiage that has you thinking that?
Yeah. It does say, it does say Perform repairs as needed, so I guess, what does that mean?
It says continue programs of replacing, comma, painting, comma, replastering as preventative maintenance.
Preventative maintenance, though. Replacing an entire
Continue programs of replacing.
Which we have done. Those are the posts.
That's what I want to know. I'm on page the
But the last part of that sentence is preventative.
The title of the maintenance is continue programs of replacing, so you're assuming that programs of replacing are already ongoing.
Yeah. And I think, to me, replacing is sort of a hard issue because there is, you know, if a section of fence goes down because of the wind, is that, are you replacing it or are you repairing it?
If you own property, you won't be doing anything with that.
Well, again
You could file an insurance claim, like, that's exactly part of the argument of why we should not be taking
But the way this was set up even under the special districts, there was a split of responsibility between the homeowners and the town. And the town's responsibility was for the pickets and all the external piece. The homeowners was the posts. So whether it's under the special districts or under the IGA, there was not, the town, the town's responsibility was never confined, certainly to painting. And the word repair is in there, and these are things, these are clauses separated by semicolons, they are clearly, you know, independent responsibilities. And then you get into these other sections, you know, what Jason was reading from is the section that applies, you know, sort of generally to the, to obligations under the agreement. It doesn't say specific, it's not specific to fences. What I read earlier was specific to fences. But yeah, push comes to shove, do I think that the language that he read can contemplate that the town is responsible for replacing at least the pickets? Yes. So again, that's, I'm not speaking for anyone on this other than myself, reading it as someone who's read and litigated a whole bunch of legal agreements. It seems pretty clear to me that the town's responsibility is repair, replace, and possibly, sorry, repair, maintain, and possibly replace. And that's, again, I'm not saying that's the only conditions under which, you know, this would get resolved. And in fact, I'm saying the opposite. I would, you'd really like us to get to something that everyone can deal with. It's just, you know, if we were to get into a dispute with the town, my starting position is not, we start from whatever the most reasonable thing we put on the table was. It's, if your position is, no, we're not going to do anything, my position is not going to be, well, will you please do painting?
May I add something? Commercial fire, lots of fences.
By the way, introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Darius Fair. I'm, I guess I'm VP.
Or a member.
Or a member VP. Okay. Commercial fire, lots of fences, repair. My fence too, okay? We paid for posts. The town took care of the sidings and the painting. And they were going all around painting everything. I'm just saying, that's what I saw being done. So it's, it's not just what's in contracts, it's actually what has been performed recently.
I don't think that's accurate.
I'd have to check.
I didn't pay for it. The HOA didn't pay for it. Somebody paid for it.
Because there was a lot of fencing that, you know, homeowners lost their homes, those fences.
The side fences, yes.
And, no, 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 like the open space exterior perimeter fence was not installed.
I don't, that's the first I've heard of anybody not doing their, everybody I've talked to, because I've got friends who lost their fences, everybody replaced theirs themselves.
I watched the town going around painting everything.
They have a
We replaced, we did replace our fences, but we didn't paint them.
Oh, but you said that we
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And that's a big, that's a big
Big difference.
Big difference.
But in terms of maintenance, the town did go around and paint everything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you, Clay, and I think you make a lot of really, really fair points. I, I think that the town council, town board previously, could have done a better job for sure with like managing the expectations of the community with like how the landscape fee was going to be managed, right? Like it could have been steadily increased and we could have, for whatever reason, the board just didn't want to increase the landscape fee for years and years. And, you know, that didn't keep up with the inflation and that could have been something that we could have changed. And, you know, from, you know, Matt's point earlier, the, the landscape fee in terms of what we're paying for with the fences over time, it's like 5% of what is actually used for the landscape fee because there's a lot of mowing
Absolutely.
And snow being removed and flowers being planted and trees being planted. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a big budget. You know, the fence maintenance was 150,000 dollars out of a $2 million budget, something like that, right? So 5% and something like that, relatively de minimis. You know, the, the issue really is, from, from my perspective, we have an issue, there's a bunch of different issues, some of which like can't really get into too much in detail without revealing like attorney-client privilege information, but, you know, there's an issue with the fact that there's like no sunset to this provision. So like, at what point do we maintain these fences? For 500 years? 1,000 years?
Could you bring it to a ballot measure?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a, that's a potential, you know, path forward, right? So there's a problem with like the perpetual nature of this obligation, right? There's a problem with the parties to that agreement to begin with, that it's the town on both sides of the transaction now. There's, and then there's just problems under Colorado law, under Tabor, under like the local budget act, like in terms of encumbering municipalities. Like we need to have the ability as stewards of taxpayer dollars to say, hey, we don't have the money to fund this project and that project, and we need to be able to make those tough decisions. So like, under Colorado law, like you can't basically tie the hands of a local budget, a local budgetary authority like, like the town council. You need to have them have the discretion. Now, if we use that discretion in a way that the voters don't like, there's remedy at the ballot box, but like you have that discretion nonetheless. All that said, I think at the, at the end of the day, like what we have before us is we've got an existing problem. We've got fences throughout the community that need to be maintained, and there's a couple of potential solutions to that problem.
Well, and I, well, sorry, go ahead. You're going to lay out what those are.
Yeah, so I mean, one of those, one of those problems is tell the homeowners, every man for himself, you maintain your fences. One solution would be push this onto the HOA's plate and have the HOA use the covenants that the HOA has at its disposal to use special assessments to start over time funding a war chest to then pay a contractor. I recognize that there's the limitations in terms of the dues that can be raised. I think that that's a fair point. And then the other option would be for the town to do something, whether it's increase the landscape fee or not, fund it out of the general fund, and we could pay a contractor. Like, but there's like three possibilities. Or you could just not have the fences maintained at all. And, you know, I think
That is option one, by the way.
Well, yeah, I mean, so like not, not maintaining them at all or requiring the homeowners to do it.
It's the same thing.
You're going to have people that aren't going to be maintaining it. It's going to not have a consistent look. It's not in the community's best interest to have that. So I think the only options that are actually on the table are either for the HOA to do it or for the town to do it. And, and then the question is like, who's best suited to do it and what's the solution going forward?
Well, and in terms of, you know, how long, the sunset issue, you know, how long should it, how long should it go on? I don't know how long it is, but I know it's at least as long as you keep collecting landscape fees because as long as, again, you've got an intergovernmental agreement that sets out what the service levels are, that establishes the landscape fee, and you can't take the landscape fee that you like and disclaim the obligation to fence maintenance that you don't. That's just, if this were just a battle under, you know, pure contract law, there is no way that you can, you can do that. So when does it sunset? Well, go to the voters and put another, put another ballot measure on there that changes the term to the IGA or changes the commitment, or continue to acknowledge the agreement and keep collecting fees on it. Because this is, this kind of what's fair issue, again, the big thing that just keeps getting let at, left out is the Rock Creek homeowners have paid this landscape fee for 23 years under a contract that said that would be, that part of that would go to defense maintenance. So, you know, I don't think you can maintain the position that you get to stop the obligation but keep collecting the fee. The parties, I know what you're alluding to. I, I will phrase this in terms of, try to phrase it in a way that doesn't reflect any attorney communications on our side or things where I think, you know, your attorney has talked to our attorney. So those communications are not privileged. With, with the standing in those two contracts, your standing happens in two ways. One is sort of your common law standing, which you guys like you and me are probably used to litigating, which, you know, you're really looking at for organizational standing. I guess, I haven't looked at it in years, you know, there's like four factors. You're essentially looking at, you know, is an organization closely enough tied to the issue and can they do something about it? Well, the one thing I liked about your August meeting was, you know, several of your members did a wonderful job of saying that, you know, not only was this a problem for the HOA to fix, but suggesting that it was a problem that the HOA caused. I think I can put together, you know, quotes as long as your arm from individual members of the council trying to portray this as an HOA issue. So I think in any analysis, it's just looking at the common law factors. I'm feeling okay about our case, not saying we're going to win. I never pound the table on standing issues. But the other issue is, standing can also be a, be created by statute. And in Colorado, there are statutes that lay out when an HOA has standing. And it's, you know, usually related to, is a governmental entity going to take some action that affects more than two members? So, you know, on the statutory standing, you know, I'm not going to opine on it because I'm not an HOA lawyer, but, you know, I think that that, I understand the arguments that you guys think you have. I'm not saying that, that, I'm not going to handicap, are you going to win or would we win in that, in that circumstance? I'm just saying, I think it's a harder dispute than just the HOA wasn't, wasn't a party to the, to, to the initial contract. The flexibility, I get it, but again, the, the IGA itself and the, and particularly the ballot measure, you know, those both state straight out that the town was supposed to increase or decrease the, the amount of, the amount of the landscape fee to accommodate obligations that were going in and out of it. And I totally get that you guys are And I totally get that you guys are stuck with the situation that your predecessors didn't do what they should have done. But that's not really on the HOA or on the individual homeowners. That is something that you guys could tomorrow go out and change the terms of the landscape fee and start collecting enough to meet the obligations under it. And that may not, you were presented with like four different options by the consultant that you looked at. You could explore any one of those, other than, again, from my perspective, the number one, which was just drop all the obligation, it doesn't fly under the IGA. But you could do that anytime and there's nothing that stops you from doing it. And in terms of pushing it back to the HOA, I think, yeah, one option is it's every man for himself, but again, that would be ignoring the contractual obligations of the town. You can push it back to the HOA, but then all you're really saying is that, you know, we're supposed to step in and be the bad guys and enforce it if a homeowner decides not to maintain their fence. And, you know, at your August meeting, there were several people up on that day who admitted that and acknowledged that, you know, the fences in Rock Creek, I mean, we've got miles of hiking trails in this town, the little like micro playgrounds that you have behind your house, Mark, there are others kind of back over by the school, all these little pockets of areas that make this a town that people want to live in. And every one of those things, if they're backing up to open space or a town maintained that grassy areas requires fencing to separate it from the homeowners. And I think most people would acknowledge it would be a good thing if those fences looked nice and weren't falling down or well maintained. I mean, I've certainly been in towns when that's not the case and you see like, you know, a dog park that backs up to someone's house and the fence is falling down. It's not pretty and it does lower, lowers home values. I'm not particularly inclined, as an HOA board member, if some resident doesn't perform fence maintenance that the town was on the hook to provide, I don't really feel like I'm going to be lifting my hand to vote for fining that resident. I would be more likely to tell them, go talk to the town about it and by the way, here's the IGA provision that you should cite when talking to them. I don't think it's fair for you guys to just take this problem that has been created because predecessors on the board didn't budget appropriately and just say, okay, now it's your problem, guys.
Clay, I'd like to add to what you were saying there about voting to fine the homeowners or whatever. We also vote to take legal action against homeowners who do not pay their fines. So if we were to try to take someone to court to force them to maintain their fence, this becomes an argument that they can bring to court in their defense to say, well, it was never my responsibility, the town was supposed to do it. But the town hasn't dissolved that agreement, the town hasn't taken it back to the voters. You don't get to just pick the one thing and you don't want to do in fences and keep doing the rest of it.
I have a question about the fees. So you've mentioned a couple of times now that the landscape fee, if we weren't doing the fences, that we shouldn't have Rock Creek residents paying the landscape fee, but to Mark's point, the landscape fee covers a whole lot more than just the fences and also not just Rock Creek residents are paying that, but a lot of other town residents, because part of my problem with people in other areas of town paying for my fence that backs to an open space area and it's quite a lot, I don't think it's fair for people not in Rock Creek certainly to be paying for my fence to be painted, so.
I don't think they are.
They would be, yeah, because the landscape fee is a town.
No, Rock Creek gets a different landscape fee than other parts of town.
No, it's not correct.
I think it is.
We have different landscape fees for different types of residential units, but not for different parts of town.
Got it.
So the large
But there are portions of town that currently aren't paying any landscape fee.
Yeah.
Right, so.
But it's not just a Rock Creek fee, it's a town fee based on the type of residence, but not where you live.
That's why we tried to get the information from the town on, from the outset, what proportion of the landscape fee originally was being allotted to the fence maintenance. We were never able to get that data. From that point forward, we had no way to understand, how did the town break up that money? And then more recently, the town moved it to the general budget. So, again, you've got this landscape fee that's ostensibly supposed to be covering fence maintenance, but you're no longer using it for that. What are you using it for? What was the, should the proportion have been that they were supposed to keep up with over time to allot for fence maintenance? We never were able to get that data. And maybe it doesn't exist, I don't know. But, you know, whatever that landscape fee was supposed to cover from the get-go, some of that was fencing. What percentage was fencing?
And to me, there's sort of two issues. There's the legal issue and there's the fairness issue. The legal issue is, again, you can't keep the parts of the contract that you like and disclaim the parts that you don't. And that's just kind of contract law 101. So if you are going to disclaim the obligation to maintain fences, the other part that disappears is your authorization to collect the fees. Now, on the issue that, sort of the fairness issue, again, I think, I acknowledge it exists. I think that the challenge is, you know, there's all sorts of stuff. It's just kind of a fact of civic life that we all end up paying for things that we may not value, we may not get the benefit of, and even things that we flat out oppose. I mean, there's been things that this body has funded that, you know, I as a voter didn't like or, and really was, you know, not just because I didn't get anything out of it, but because I actively opposed what was going on. That just kind of happens. But also, at your August meeting, there was a discussion, very brief, about if you were to decide to bring in those neighborhoods that haven't been paying the landscaping fee, you know, what would be the legality of that? And your next response is, well, you've got community benefit there. And then kind of quickly segued into, but let's talk about this in executive session. I think just as a matter of sort of common sense and everyone's experience of this community, again, having, when Superior is still a majority of the population and a majority of the acreage in this town and has most of the infrastructure I was talking about with parks, walking trails, all of that kind of stuff, it is a benefit to the town as a whole and to every homeowner in this town to have the majority of the town look nice and be something. So I don't think it's as simple as, you know, this is a benefit to Rock Creek homeowners. Now, were the homeowners going to get most of that benefit if they don't, by virtue of not having to pay for fence maintenance? Yep. But there are lots of other things that the town spends money on that I don't get the benefit of because of my particular circumstances or where I live. And again, the fairness issue cannot be looked at isolated from this issue of Rock Creek paying into the landscape fee and before that into the special districts. It was always contemplated that those fences, you know, I shouldn't say, surely it was contemplated that fences would have a set life and that as time went by, it would cost more to maintain them. It's not fair to say that the Rock Creek residents who paid into this for two decades, now the rules change and they're supposed to just pick it up on their own. You know, that's not fair. So I hear you about, this is kind of unfair to other neighborhoods, but you can't look at only the neighborhoods and not look at what's fair to the Rock Creek residents do.
Yeah.
I guess like, just a quick logistics question. The obligation went to the HOA to find people who do not take care of their fences. If there are legal fees that come about with us trying to collect that, we cannot recoup 100% of that in litigation. That's like 60 years. So, like us trying to find people and get them to pay and having to use legal means to do that is ultimately like, it will kill our funds of everything because we can't, we can't find the person enough to pay for what we're paying to fund them.
And we have a cap on how much.
Does that make sense?
We have a cap on how much we can find.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, from the town's perspective, like we don't care from just the town's perspective if you have a fence at all. All right, so like, you know, you can knock down your fence tomorrow and, you know, if somebody comes and complains, hey, Clay knocked down this fence, the town says, all right, take it up with your neighbor.
Do you require any of your PUDs or anything that require fences on open space?
We don't require fences. So, you know, the covenants within the Rock Creek GHOA have designed, you know, you need to paint your house every now and then and, you know, then you give notices to your residents to paint the house because it's all about the aesthetics, so like.
But you kind of do care though, because the IGA, I mean, it explicitly sets out this obligation, so there may not be, there may not be a town ordinance that says, you know, that we're going to find you if you don't, if your fence goes down, but you entered into a contract that took over an obligation that was specific to fence maintenance. And even before that, under the special tax districts, you had an obligation to maintain all the stuff that wasn't the interior posts. So, you know, the town may not have an ordinance that makes it a crime or a municipal offense to not have a fence, but you obviously cared enough to enter into an agreement that establishes those obligations to maintain it.
It'd be interesting to look into too, because I don't think the HOA declarations require a fence. You know, there's maintenance requirements, but there's nothing that requires a fence. And the fences were put up by the, you say the builder. I'd be surprised if there wasn't anything in your PUD that doesn't address it.
I'm pretty sure it does, because we did the rebuilds, they had to put fences up.
Yeah, and I mean, so like we don't issue permits for fences.
Right.
The type of fence, there was a
We also don't care about like
Fences.
We do issue permits for fences now.
There definitely are requirements around what they have to look like. I don't really know. Does it say you have to have one? I think it probably assumes you do.
I think it does, because residents were trying to find ways to save money and frustrated that they had to put up a fence in order to meet the, whatever the HOA's requirements were for them to, their house to like clear, that you've done all the things that you can do to move back in. And they were asking, I remember folks were asking, can we do it later? And they got a no.
I wasn't on the board at that time, but given what I've seen, I'm surprised someone didn't show up and say, hey, guess what? I found this loophole in your charter.
They would have, yeah. I think that was, we talked about a lot of how we don't require one, but certain PUDs or the HOA covenants require them.
Because there's an entire fence committee and largely made up of residents who were facing exactly what Jen said, where they didn't have the money to do it and being forced to do it and trying to figure out how to get it done.
Yeah, and I, in an ideal world, there needs to be some way that recognizes the old agreement, distributes the cost in a way that homeowners don't feel like this is just the town shirking its obligations, also doesn't expect them to shoulder 100% of what they, you know, very likely see as a town obligation. I would love to see something that reflects, you know, those principles. Unfortunately, in what I saw at that August meeting was a lot of, you know, this is all the HOA's fault and they're not taking responsibility for this and they need to step up and do something. And again, my challenge is, what obligation are we in the HOA shirking other than the kind of asserted obligation that we should step in and solve something that your predecessors screwed up?
I'll just say for the record, we're not saying that this is the HOA's fault. And I think right now we have, we have a shared problem that we're trying to like figure out like what's the best way to navigate through. You know, you and I in our careers have encountered poorly drafted documents that then you're stuck with, that you're trying to figure out like what's the path forward. But since you were talking about like, you know, in a perfect world, like in a perfect world, what should happen, right? Like I think we've got a unique situation here in Superior because for the last 25 years, Rock Creek was 90 to 95% of the population of Superior. And that has changed, you know, now it's maybe 65%, 70% to go like that, but it's not 95%. But, you know, at that point in time, you know, the people that were sitting on that dais there very often kind of viewed issues as a collective issue for the town to fix because most of the town's residents were Rock Creek residents, but that's no longer the case. But in a perfect world, like if we were starting over, the town shouldn't be maintaining any like the aesthetic requirement of any sort of homeowners association. That's the sort of stuff that like homeowners association would typically have. And if we had a community with 10 Rock Creeks, you know, and we were only painting the fences in one of those HOAs and all of the other ones were taking care of themselves, that would be strength, right? Like it would make more sense in a perfect world for the HOAs to be handling the aesthetics and then the town to handle the trash pickups, which is the segue to the next.
But I think we're, it's not pure aesthetics though. I have to push back on that because what's also unique about Rock Creek in this circumstance is, you know, in a lot of other HOAs, all of those common areas, the grounds, the parks and everything are HOA owned and controlled, they set the rules for it. It's not this sort of interlaced thing that we have here. I don't think it's an aesthetic consideration that backyards that face toward an open space area, toward a city maintained park, toward a, to a city maintained path, that's not just aesthetics, that's also function. I don't think anyone would say that they want someone's dog running around in the backyard with no fence backing up to city-owned property. So there's both a functional component and an aesthetic component to our fences that is again, sort of idiosyncratic in just this weird way that, you know, you guys have responsibility for an ownership of a whole bunch of land that sits within the Rock Creek community.
So Mark, I want to take your position, okay? The town has an issue and feels that since the HOA is now 65%, 70% going down, but you also have a legal contract. What we in the HOA haven't heard from you is, okay, what do you want to do? I mean, for us to just stand up as the HOA and say, oh, well, we'll take that over for you, but there's a legal contract. What, and monies are being paid, okay? The fences are a small portion of those in terms of your budget, but nonetheless. So the question I have is, Clay has very clearly enunciated all these things, you've enunciated yours, but what we haven't heard is what's a reasonable approach? And that I haven't heard.
Well, I said before, I think like there's two possible solutions, one of which would be the HOA would assess its membership over time, start filling the coffers of that reserve to then contract with a company to maintain.
And stop charging the homeowners for that.
That's one, that's one possible solution. And then the other possible solution is for the town to change its current decision and to reinstate the collection of an additional landscape fee sufficient to cover the costs of maintaining, which by the way, I was in favor of doing just a couple of months ago, but I got outvoted, so.
Well, my question is, why were you outvoted? I mean, is there not a clear understanding of the IGA agreement and the fact?
I won't speak for my fellow council members.
Well, I'll speak for myself on this. This IGA, I'm not a lawyer, I think there's one, two, three, four attorneys in this room? Anybody else? Yeah, this is like the lawyer haven, if you want to look at the community. It's the contract, right? I mean, I read through this and I'm not an attorney, but I've read a lot of construction contracts with owners, contractors, builders, developers. I wouldn't go so far as to criticize the individual writing this, I just don't believe it's very, very well written, but it basically does. But this guy, yes, this is us, regardless who did this, how long ago, we are the town and this is the town, this is a document that we have to abide by. And when it talks about on exhibit E on page, well, it doesn't say what page it is, it talks about, you know, perimeter fencing and perform repairs as needed and then further down it says continue programs replacing, but it doesn't differentiate between what are you going to replace and what are you going to repair. It's a poorly written document, but it says it's going to replace and if we can't prove to the HOA that there is a separate line item for fence money and every other kind of money, I don't see any difference between replacing and repairing on here in my opinion. And I think, you know what, despite my opinion before and not really thinking too much about this issue, you know, I don't live in Rock Creek, there's no dog in the fight for me on this one, but I think we're on the hook for this. This is something we agreed to a long time ago and we're backing away from it like Clay said and we're trying, well, we don't want to pay for this, we don't want to pay for that. But it's very clear to me, just from my understanding of construction law, that we're kind of on the hook because we made an agreement with the HOA a while back and we said, we'll do these things for you, even though we're not going to delineate exactly what it is and where the money's going to go and how much we're going to spend on it, but we're basically going to say that we're going to be here and do this and now we don't want to do that. So I would be more in favor of doing the agreement over again if we can come to a re-sensus somehow and just do a new IGA, because if this isn't going to census somehow, and just do a new IGA, because if this isn't going to work anymore, we've got to figure something that's going to work, because the Rock Creek HOA is not happy, the residents aren't happy, and we're not, we're not happy either.
One other option, in addition to the town kind of revisiting, and this is to Rachel's point earlier, and I'm not suggesting that this is what we should do or should not do, but it's an option, is, we could go to the voters in November of 2026, and just put the ballot question, and then say like, look, it's not great documents, that like, we're starting over, and this is clear what the obligation's going to be. And maybe we say like, okay, this is, you know, to paint and, you know, do minor maintenance, and then, you know, question number two, like, to fund the replacement. So it's in black and white, it's clear, not ambiguous, and then if the voters say, yeah, let's do this, then we fix it.
It's a democratic way, and Rachel, I do like that idea.
I do, well, and I also want to mention, I believe the consultant, because I watched some of that meeting when the consultant was discussing different ways of dealing with this, one of the possibilities mentioned was possibly charging the Rock Creek residents who have these fences a little bit more than the other parts of Superior that do not. And that seemed like, but that's, there was very little discussion about that particular option, everybody just kind of bleeped past it and said, oh, no, it's HOA's problem now. And to me, the collecting the proper amount of fees perhaps weighted to Rock Creek more than other parts of town for these fences, I know that can be done on the water bill. So I'm pretty sure that came up as a possibility, as far as technically. So I, what I have not understood is why the town doesn't just fund the tank fences appropriately that they should have been doing all this time. The agreement's already there.
At this point, the fences are well over $10 million, so it's not a just like, we'll just fund it.
Well, it's not 10 million all at once.
To replace it, it is.
Not at one time, you're not going to replace all of them at one time. We did a reserve study, what do you...
Yeah, it was like 7 to 10 million dollars.
Yeah.
But it was broken out to do over a five-year period.
Right.
Yeah, but it's still, still $10 million.
That's how typical management of HOA assets are.
Right. But, again, the town should have been preparing for that, and that they didn't is not our fault.
The part that I have issue with, and we talked about this a lot, and we haven't talked about it here yet at all, is, these are private property, these fences are on private property.
They're not entirely private.
There may be parts on Eastman, but they are, the fences generally are private property, so we have now, we've got our staff and contractors out there doing stuff to a fence that does not belong to us, it belongs to a homeowner. And I have not figured out how to square that.
Well, I guess, one response is, at a practical level, in 23 years, has this ever once been an issue, that the town has, is going to perform maintenance on someone's home, on their fence, and they've pushed back and said, no, 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 I don't want you on my property?
It's not the people pushing back that I'm concerned about, I'm concerned if something happens.
Yeah, if somebody gets hurt and they're on private property...
Then we get sued.
Sure, but if we take on the maintenance, it's not like people aren't going to be going back and forth on your property and our property, it's just kind of common sense, there's no way to be boundering and crossing.
But you're not liable for that, though.
But again, has it ever, ever been an issue?
Part of our job is to mitigate risk to the...
Same here. Right, but here, but you guys have kind of created this problem, because had the Metro Districts been left in place, it would be, you know, crystal clear that, you know, here's a tax mechanism to pay for this, and whose responsibilities it is to then do that maintenance. The town created this problem by, you know, changing that arrangement and entering into the IGA. So from my perspective, whether it's a private homeowner or not, the town took on this obligation, it was submitted to the voters, so the voters took on that risk of, you know, who is responsible for maintaining private property. You guys, I don't think actually, I'm going to leave this to the lawyers who actually understand, you know, metro law and HOA stuff, I can't think of any way that you guys can just decide as a board, that we took, we have these IGA obligations, but we think it's risky, so we're not going to honor them.
It's not just the risk part for me, it's the replacement piece, which I don't interpret this contract to say that we're on the hook for replacement, and so that's the part for me, where I'm like, this is the point where we make a change, because the fences need to be replaced.
Yeah, and this is, look, to me, there are two or three ways to do this. You can, we can get into a full-blown dispute where we each get to state our case about what that language means. I don't take any of this kind of stuff personally, so for me, it's, yep, if you think it means one thing, and I think it means another, you know, there's, there are these things called judges and courts that tell us who's right. I would strongly prefer not to have to go that route, and for all of us to, you know, come to an agreement that makes sense for everyone, and it's fair to everyone. That's the much, lawsuits are brain damage under the worst of conditions, and they're expensive, and you guys don't want to spend the money on it, and we don't spend the money, want to spend the money on it. So I would prefer a negotiated solution, but why, but I don't think there's a lot of tolerance among the HOA board members for an approach that's just, the city will tell us what they're willing to do, and we're just going to ignore the terms of the ICA, or accept that, that a, that those, the words in that agreement only mean paint. We've got to come to some agreement that reasonably reflects the commitment on the town's part, the taxes that have been paid, and the language of the agreement.
Well, what I'd like to see is, and I'm getting some sense from the town members, or the town council members, that it would be better if those homeowners who had adjoining fences paid more assessments. I don't think there's anybody on the HOA board who would disagree with that. Now, how do we accomplish that? Oh, going to the voters and assessing according to that particular situation.
I don't know that the voters even need to approve the landscape fee in raising it, because it's already in the IGA, that they were supposed to raise it appropriately.
But does it apply to everybody, is my question.
That...
It applies to everybody who's, well, we had the budget numbers...
It applies to the Class 1 tracks.
In the Class 1...
Which is Rock Creek.
Landscape fee, which is Rock Creek.
Right. It does not apply to the...
So you could raise that particularly?
Yeah, and what we were looking, what we were looking at back in, when was this? So the current landscape fee is 4224 for a single-family home, and what we were looking at was, one option would be if fence maintenance was paid by only Rock Creek, all of Rock Creek.
Right.
But only Rock Creek, and that would up it about $5, so 4710. And then fence maintenance was paid only by those...
Right.
People that had fences that were backing to town property, so just raising those rates would raise them up to 5179, but, you know, again...
I think we're talking about almost trivialities here.
Those are negligible amounts.
Negligible.
But that's maintenance only.
That's maintenance, that's not a place.
That's not...
So start including the others, and come up with figures that are appropriate, and rather than having this butting of heads, it's like, okay, it sounds, because we, I'd never heard any of this, it sounds like reasonable proposals.
Well, I mean, this is what we discussed at our meeting in August, public meeting, you know, video team.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, what Rachel in particular was pointing out is, the discussions seem to, like, very quickly go to the no-work-at-all-on-fences option. There wasn't really an exploration of any of the others. I don't think, I'm not sure that there actually was any discussion of the others, it was just kind of a recommendation from staff that you don't do anything, including painting, and that was the, that was what ended up being discussed.
Well, I think we discussed it, I mean, I don't remember specifically, and I didn't go back and re-watch it, but we talked about the idea of, you know, the Rock Creek homeowners as a whole playing, and we talked about the Rock Creek homeowners that are only benefiting from it, because they have the fences that are adjoining, but ultimately, the direction from the majority of the council was to continue. And I think, and I don't want to speak for all of you, but I think the main hangup was the looming albatross of global replacement of a $10 million liability in the future. And recognizing that that may not be coming next year, in five years, but it's coming at some point.
Yeah.
And, you know, our position is that in no way should the town be responsible for globally replacing all the fences in Rock Creek. And so we were like, open to starting repainting, provided that there was an understanding that if there was going to be replacement, that the town wouldn't be on the hook for it. And I think the direction from council to staff was, we felt that it was cleaner, essentially, to not muddy the waters by starting it again, and then all of a sudden, somebody making the argument that we need to replace all the fences.
But the IGA sets forth a way to pay for this, again, and that's already in place. You don't have to get anybody's approval to raise that landscape fee, it's already something you have the right to do. This, HOA cannot raise their assessments enough to cover this, you can't as a town with the landscape fee.
Are you talking about the, like, increasing the fees to meet that full replacement?
Ultimately, to build a reserve to do that, that's what we've been talking about on our end.
The problem now, from our staff, is that the fences are already not holding paint, so it's a now problem, it is not a later problem.
Or some of them, not all, not the entire town.
It may be a 10-year, 10-15-year problem. In other words, you have to start now.
But even if you spread that $1 million a year over 10 years...
I just, I just did, I just did that, and the homeowners' fee might double.
The people who should have been paying all the way.
They're paying 300 to us now, it may cost an extra 300 for...
Annually.
Rock Creek, annually.
And...
For everyone in Rock Creek, or only the fence owners?
For everyone in Rock Creek.
So I think that's a problem.
I did it back then.
I don't think anybody that doesn't have a fence is going to be okay with doubling the HOA's fee.
Well, they're benefiting.
Well, shouldn't it be more than just going up to 300? No, because if you're only raising it just to cover the fences, you're not creating another fund to continue to maintain in the future, so that makes zero sense to do that.
My guess would be if we were, if it was to be replaced, we wouldn't be doing it with cedar again, which is essentially a wick, and you've all learned that that's a nightmare. So you'd have to choose something that hopefully wouldn't require to be painted every single year, and isn't going to wear the way wood would, because wood should be used.
Yeah, and this is kind of the irony of this, and it's why, you know, I hope everyone can get steered back to, you know, looking at something like, you know, the town adjusting the landscape fees within the existing structure in a way that everyone can agree with, because no one on our side, during any of these conversations, both the meeting in February, or as I understand, the legal-to-legal conversations, had ever said, you know, we're holding you guys responsible for replacement. You know, my...
People say that to us all the time.
But not people who are on the board, and certainly no one who's been taking that official position. The only way we got to this is sort of, you know, you guys taking the maximalist position that we're not going to do anything, which leads me to say, well, okay, if that's going to be your position, and we end up having to get into a fight about this, my position is going to be, we need to enforce the IGA as written. And that's the only way we end up with, you know, this concern that you guys have about being on the hook for replacement. And, look, individual homeowners tell us stuff that doesn't make any sense under the charter or under the contract all the time, so I have no doubt that people, you know, do the same thing to you, but that's, you know, we can't look at those as determining what everyone should do.
Some context, though, for many months, we were not able to engage with the board, that was not happening, and we were getting hit by residents with emails constantly about this. And so just keep that in perspective of, like, our framing of things.
Totally.
And so that's why this was so important to, you know, be able to have this.
Look, all I can say is that that happened before I was even on this board, and before several other people, some of the others were on this board, and it would not have been my position then, and the whole reason you guys had the meeting in February was because I made it very clear that was, that was not my position, and it wasn't the position of, I think, most of the people sitting around this table. It was just something that had kind of developed, because there had been a string of sort of disputes with the town, and some people were of the view that there, you know, it wasn't a good use of time to sit down. I said, I absolutely disagree with that, it's why that meeting happened, and why I'm glad we're all sitting here today. It's always better to talk than not talk.
Yeah, absolutely. And I appreciate that we're talking about it, and I don't think that it's in the town's best interest, I don't think it's in the HOA's best interest, I don't think it's in the HOA's membership's best interest for us to waste money on lawyers going, no offense, Dan, just because you're the one that's billing right now. Well, I guess Nick's billing too, but, yeah.
I'm cheap.
Yeah.
I'm cheap.
I don't think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the membership to pay lawyers to fight over this dispute.
I mean, look, the fences are going to have to be done somehow, it's going to cost money, the money's going to have to come from people who benefit, whether you're direct benefit or your tangential benefit, one way or another, it's going to have to come from the taxpayers. And so when you said, well, let's put around 26 ballots, like, yes!
So, one option is for us to, I mean, so we just passed our budget, in the budget, we passed our landscape fee for 2026, yeah. Things can get amended if we wanted to go back and reconsider, but, so we could certainly have a discussion about whether or not we want to reconsider what we decided for the budget for 2026. Separated apart from that, you know, we'll have a budget for 2027 coming around the corner, which Jason said he wanted to get started working on in January, so it's almost January. And, you know, this is obviously an ongoing problem, so we can continue to have that conversation, have the conversation about like, whether we want to send something to the voters or not. I mean, I guess, one possibility, you know, independent of going to the voters, would be, so I understand the financial constraints that the HOA has in terms of raising its dues. We're going to be talking about the trash contract next, that's like a $500,000 line item, that, you know, under the current, like, plans of the town, we'll get into this conversation, that essentially could be removed from the HOA's budget and placed into the town's budget. You could continue to collect the same amount of dues, and then basically take that $500,000 and start that as your war chest fund for global replacement of fences. So maybe one way to kind of skin this cat is, you know, assuming that the town's taking over the trash contract, you start raising a war chest to fund the replacement of the fences, and then maybe the town continues to pay for the maintenance for some period of time, and like, that's kind of like the global compromise. That way, you're not constrained by the 10% cap on raising, you're actually raising real dollars that are sufficient to actually fund big chunks of replacement. Just thinking out loud here, it might be a terrible idea, but that's one way to kind of...
We actually have talked about that in our meetings, haven't we?
Yeah, and I think the one thing that's sort of on the horizon that we need to, at least, and we don't need to resolve it here, but it's something that our respective lawyers need to talk about, is, you guys have kind of started the ticking time bomb on our end with the letter that went out, you know, a little less than two years ago, to the homeowners, telling them that you weren't going to continue to do fence maintenance. That creates some legal risk on our side to just ignore that while continued talks going, while people continue to talk. So there needs to, there would need to be some kind of agreement that we reached, that there is a stand-down that removes that ticking clock while everyone continues to be reasonable and talk about this stuff. And lawyers resolve this all the time, so it's easy to do. Garbage contracts?
We can talk about that and come back around. I don't know what people think about that idea, but it was just...
For anything that's going to be equitable for everybody, especially the residents at this point, and I just, like I said, this is kind of punitive, so I'd rather...
I also don't really want to talk about this anymore, so I would like to solve it, or, you know.
I think there are lots of people on our side that feel the same way, so we should be able to get to something.
Yeah. And I, you know, in an ideal world, we're not just kicking the can.
Yeah.
And, because that's one of the problems, and we've talked about it before, like, we could like, restart fence maintenance, and be like, all right, well, we're fixing this for the next two to four years, depending on like, our terms. And then that's a future council's problem, and a future HOA's problem, for when we get right back to this situation where there's a decision saying...
Some of us will still be...
Yeah, well, some of us will be terming it at some point.
You never know what's going to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, all right. So why don't we pivot to the trash contract and then we maybe come back and
Yeah. So I, I don't know. This one is sort of the reverse in some ways of the landscape fee, because I don't think there's anyone at this table who doesn't acknowledge that the town has the legal, has the legal ability to force Rock Creek to not sign, not renew its current contract and to sign up to the town contract. I think that, I don't know that there's a lot of support in the Rock Creek community for doing that.
We did a survey.
Yep. And there are issues around that, which I'm fine with. I think that if someone thinks our survey was defective, it's sort of put your own on the table and tell me if you've done one that says that the residents of Rock Creek who are happy with their current service can keep something similar to that current service and pay something reasonably close to what they are currently paying.
How about this? I will stipulate that most residents don't want to pay more than what they're currently paying, and they don't want to opt into composting. So I will stipulate that.
All right. I think that's probably the case.
This is very important. You know why I joined the Board of Directors? My daughter said composting is really, really important. Dad, join the board. So I joined the board and I pushed for composting. But I'm a reasonable guy and I listen to everybody. And I wasn't just in the minority. I was in the No. And, and we pay for our own composting. I studied your town contract. I said, hmm, for us who are, this is going to work perfectly. You know how much garbage we toss out per week? About this much. I can take your little teeny tiny. And guess what? I'm actually going to pay less than I am in Rock Creek. But I'm, so I can't in good conscience support that because I'm not supporting the majority of the Rock Creek homeowners who want that garbage container.
Or two.
Or two, yes. But even if they only have one, Rachel, it's still going to cost them twice as much.
Right.
And there was no way around that. I couldn't argue that. And the reason is because I wanted to tell you, you set up a perfect situation and I wish most people would go eh on their garbage. But that's not the way people are living.
But the town contract gives people the choice to select the service level that meets their needs. So if you have a really tiny amount of garbage, you can select the smallest garbage service and pay the least amount of money. This is really about providing the choice that's, that meets the needs of those families. If there's a family in Rock Creek that has 100 kids and they need 96 gallons of garbage and 96 gallons of recycling a week, then that's the service that they can pick. But if you're living on your own or you've got a small family and you don't generate a lot of garbage and you want to compost, that service is available through the town contract. And you don't have to pay additional money for the composting service. It's all bundled together.
Right. But the service, it, it works to the, to the benefit of people who generate very small numbers, like Darius. The, us who are older and our kids have moved out, so we don't have, you know, two or three or four kids that who are filling up a container every week. But for the people who are happy with their current level of service, which may include one or two big bins,
And that's
They are clearly getting a much better financial deal under the Rock Creek contract than under the town contract. So yes, some people are going to benefit from the flexibility and a whole bunch of people are not. And again, I recognize the town's ability to do it. But again, we took quite a bit of criticism about that poll that we ran. It wasn't apples to apples. I don't think there's a way to do apples to apples because you've got two contracts that have very different service levels, very different just kind of philosophies around how the contracts work. But again, I would challenge anyone, if you think that our methodology was wrong, where's yours that show that the average Rock Creek family can keep something similar to their current level of service and not pay a lot more under your contract?
I think the
Well, we, I'm sorry. When I, when I was on ACES, we actually tried to work with the Rock Creek Management Company and the Rock Creek HOA to do that survey, and we were denied. So if, if, if the new management company would be amenable to having the town do a survey or having the town's advisory committee for sustainability do a survey of residents, you know, maybe that can be on the table. But for years, the ACES committee tried to engage the Rock Creek HOA on this issue and we got crickets. And, and I would say that they're also going to get economies of scale by bringing in, folding in the Rock Creek HOA waste service to the town's contract, because more homes brings down the per unit cost.
I think the
So do we know that? Do you guys have an actual, you know, commitment or, or, you know, projection from your vendor that shows how much, how much is going to be reduced if Rock Creek is folded in?
I don't know if we have exact numbers from, like, the math of what it will be forwarding three years from when we initially got it. But they, they were clear that when you add in that many people, that there are going to be economies of scale for that. And then, and the concerns too, when Rock Creek, it's time to renew that contract, it's not going to stay the way that it is.
Well, they've said they'll extend it, the same contract.
For
It already is on an odd old renewal.
And there's a percentage limit.
Yeah, there's a maximum.
So I, I think the, the, the main issue though, and this is something that I know that, you know, John Heckard and I were talking about back in the February meeting. I think that the HOA has done a really good job with the trash contract that it's offered to Rock Creek residents. I mean, you're getting really good service for a fair price and you should be commended for that. However, the, the motivations of the town in pursuing this contract and then expanding the service isn't one that has been motivated on economics, right? And so like the, the arguments I'm hearing, you know, both you, Darius, in play that you've been making is that, you know, people are going to be paying more for, for the services. And essentially that, you know, Rock Creek HOA, you can get a cheaper contract than the town can get. I will concede that. But the point is that the town's motivations are not purely economic. They're environmental, they're sustainable, right? And so what we've been looking at is we've got a sustainability action plan, we're trying to implement that. We've got the lowest waste diversion rates in the county. And that's because nobody composts in Rock Creek, even though you do, Darius. But like, it's less than 1%, less than 2% of the total membership. People don't opt into it. And the studies show that the only way to actually move the needle in reducing your diversion rates is to get composting expanded. And you can't rely on people to opt in. Like, the studies show that nobody opts in. You need to have the government force people's hands and opt in and force them to opt out. And so we have a presentation on Monday night that has data on how our trash contract has been rolled out with Republic so far. And what we, what that data shows is that 98% of the participants are taking the small composting carts. The 71% of people are taking the large recycling carts. And 60% of people are taking the medium sized trash cans. So 10% are taking large, 30% are taking small. So we've got a, a, two thirds like adoption rate. And basically like our diversion rates in 2023, 2024 are like 25%, 26%. Our goal is to get to 65% by 2030. The only way to do that is by rolling out composting community wide. And, you know, the problem is that when you have these opt in systems, you always have low participation rates, always under, you know, 30, 25, even lower. The only way to get it above that is by having these mandatory problems. And when you do that, you know, they said that 30 to 40% of household waste is organics, is compostable. So people are able to then take advantage of the smaller cans, smaller trash cans, because at least some portion of that, 30 to 40% of their household waste is going into
And the backyard waste in the trash cans in Rock Creek coming
But I was going to ask, you know, does your diversion rate include the drop offs that at the, the drop off station by the dog park? Because, you know, I use that dog park virtually daily. And it's pretty rare that I don't see someone in there dropping off yard waste. And as far as I'm
And those containers are just
You guys are not accounting for that in these numbers that compare superiors diversion rates to others in the county and, and, and to, you know, other communities in the state. So that's really not a fair comparison if you're not, if you're not looking at, at the amount that's being dropped off in there. And those diversion rate, and those numbers that you're looking at, they're impressive, but they leave out that you're, you've excluded all of Rock Creek from those numbers because we're not on that contract. And that's where the larger homes with larger families that generate larger amounts of waste. So you can't just say that when you roll in your
Well, we only, we only have the data that we have.
I know, exactly.
I believe we have the data for that. If I know our, if I, if I know our staff, they, they know exactly what's
Well, they have, they have estimates, but we don't know until people roll into, you know, until we roll Rock Creek into the contract, what cans they're actually going to take.
Clayton's point really is very important about the amount. Because I, I use the hard waste, but I keep my compost bin almost full as much as I can. I put as much yard waste in there. But when it comes to leaves, then I, then I bring it down.
Problem is, you're in the very small minority.
I, I know. But I, I'm going to say something that the HOA board members can get on me for this. Do you remember when, I lived in the community for 30 years. I remember when recycling first started. And I put out my recycling bin. It's like, I asked my neighbors, why don't you put it out? I don't believe in that. I don't believe in that. Every single person on my cul-de-sac has their recycling bin. It took them years, but they've got them out now and they're filling them up. I, I don't, I don't like that argument. I don't like the government telling, you know, I, I, I'm a liberal, but I'm more, I'm libertarian also. And I don't like the government necessarily telling people how they should live their lives. And unfortunately, from the board's perspective, we feel that the town is telling people how they should live their lives.
It's not, the town isn't telling people how to live their lives. The town is providing options for people to take advantage of or not based on their individual needs. So, you know, you'd made the point about 30 years ago, you were the only person recycling and now all your neighbors are recycling. The same thing is going to be true with composting. Somebody on your street is going to start composting through that curbside program and then other neighbors are going to come out and say, well, what's that bin? Oh, well, that's for the compost. It's my food waste. This is what I do. And then sooner or later, more people, more neighbors are going to be composting. So yeah, it's going to take time and not everybody's going to be doing it right away. People are, if people haven't been exposed to the type of service that the town is offering, then yeah, they're going to be skeptical. They're going to be, well, I don't want the government telling me what to do. Again, the government is not telling them what to do. It's merely providing an option for them to say, I want this size or this size based on my need. And you know what? They're going to give me the compost cart and it's going to sit in my backyard until, you know, time immemorial. Or hey, my next door neighbor's been composting for a few months. Maybe I'll give it a try.
It's also reducing a barrier to entry. I mean, when I lived in Denver, we had composting. I bought the house, the compost bin came with the house. And I composted. It was great. They, they gave you a little compost can for the kitchen and you walked it out, put it in the compost bin. And since moving to Rock Creek, I haven't opted in. So shame on me. I haven't opted into composting under the Waste Connections contract.
I did for a while, but the bins are so darn big. I didn't have enough to put in it.
So I, I haven't done it. Well, under this contract, you can get the small, small bin and have, you know, better success with that hopefully. But, I mean, so I, I'm kind of like the, the target market here of, I have, there's been some barrier to entry in terms of signing up. Why I haven't, I haven't. And I think that there's a lot of people that are similarly situated, that once all of a sudden that compost bin shows up for people, they're going to start composting.
Now, it's basically, you're almost penalized for not doing, or for doing it because you have to pay for it. Whereas with this contract, to Darius's point, you're, you know, you'd be paying less for doing the right thing. So it's almost like, I know the, the recycle bins have that like rewards. And I asked about that.
Oh, they, they
Based on like, pay for how
It doesn't happen anymore.
No, but they used to. It was an incentive because you've got something for it. So this is if you're doing the right thing, you can opt into a smaller bin because, you know, a large portion of your trash is compostable and then you're saving money. So you could very well be paying less.
But I think that, I mean, you still have to look at what's the average user in Rock Creek. And the Rock Creek users are again, you know, bigger families, more people in houses. There are real limits on how much people can reduce the trash that they're maintaining. Otherwise, you know, most of them wouldn't be, you know, taking two bins. So, and I get the town is looking at, I, you know, I personally think that, I don't have problems with governments, big and small, you know, trying to nudge people toward doing the right thing. But economic issues do come into play. There is, you know, I hear you, Mike, that it's more flexible, but the flexible options come with different pricing. And for the people who currently, you know, have, are sort of the Rock Creek typical, again, if you have information that shows sort of all in, your price is more reasonable than ours, I'm happy to, you know, do a survey, whatever, see where the, where the votes are.
Or just 10, 20, 25%. But it's not. It's double.
And in terms of the economies of scale, there is sort of a subtle shifting of the fairness obligations between these two issues. Because on like, you know, holiday lights, the philosophy around fairness seems to be, it's every neighborhood for itself. For everything related to fence maintenance, it's kind of, it's, it's, fairness means every neighborhood for itself. On trash, all of a sudden, it's, no, we're all in this together and Rock Creek needs to suck it up and pay more. I, I think that philosophy has sort of gotten turned on its head from what we talked about during fence maintenance.
I would, I would contend that the motivations behind the trash contract are to achieve the goals that are, goals that our community shares writ large on sustainability and really move the needle on sustainability, reduce our CO2 emissions, you know, compost produces methane and doesn't produce CO2. You know, we, we think that this is, this is really the big, you know, when, when we're looking at our sustainability goals, there are a couple of kind of small things that we can do along the way. And then there are like large things that we can do, you know, key decisions that we can make that could actually move the needle substantially. And this is the biggest one by far that we can do. You know, we can electrify every building that the town owns and, you know, move it a little bit. We had, we're building a new building down by the wastewater treatment plant. And we had a discussion about, you know, what happens if we have that being LEED certified? You know, that, that, things like that can move the needle. Changing out the incandescent lights to LEDs like moves the needle slightly. Doing something like this moves the needle substantially.
So my question, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my question's really quick. The contract, the town contract, as much as I, I love it for somebody like me, it was like, why are the disparities so, so large? I mean, it literally, it's not, I'm not exaggerating when I say it's double.
It's the financial incentive to get people to not use the big bins. That's part of what this is about.
That's, that's pushing the, the needle in terms of the government is telling
Well, it's giving them an incentive, a negative incentive to change their behavior.
Yeah. But, but when the recycle bin came along, it was like, well, it's, it's there, you can use it or not use it. But in this particular case is, you're going to pay through the nose if you decide not to get a small bin.
Well, I appreciate the sustainability argument. And, and I understand why that, and I personally, the amount extra it's going to, it would cost me, it's negligible to me. It's not that way for some people. I really don't care. I would love to be able to compost with a smaller compost bin. I don't have that option right now because I have to pay for extra for a really big one I don't want. I think what rubbed the HOA the wrong way, and if I'm putting words in your mouth, please feel free to say so, I feel like the way it was presented was disingenuous. I think that the board made it sound like, oh, this is going to give so much flexibility and it's going to be a better, you know, cheaper for some people and blah, blah, blah. And that was bullshit. I'm sorry, excuse me. It's being recorded. The town was not upfront about their true added cost it's going to be for the people in Rock Creek. And tried to argue and paint our survey and the, the numbers we put together to show people the differences. The town, members of the council, basically said, nah, they're wrong. Instead of just being upfront, yeah, it's going to cost some people more. But our goal for sustainability is more important and we think it's worth trying to incent for sustainability is more important, and we think it's worth trying to incentivize people to use smaller bins. That's what really got me. And this was in comments I saw on Facebook by town council members who said their data's just wrong. And it's like, no, the costs we understood were correct based on the town's own data and the town's own information on their website. I will pay more than I do now. My neighbors with two big bins will pay more than they do now. That is not in dispute. If the town wants to argue for sustainability and say, we think this is important for our community, and we know it's going to cost a little more. Beautiful. Do that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you, Rachel. Driving around and walking around Rock Creek, which I do quite a bit of, what I see is people putting stuff in trash containers, not just compost, but a lot of recycle, and stuff that ought to be going down into the yard waste site. I mean, these bins are just simply full of that. And I'm in agreement with you, Mark, that if Rock Creek had to do this, I'll bet you within a year, there wouldn't be even half of Rock Creek, and probably a lot less, that were using the largest bins for trash. That's my belief. But I don't know that for sure, and there's no way of knowing that other than your suggestion that incent, put people on the contract and incent them to do it. But I totally agree with Rachel, that as a board, we felt like this wasn't a choice, this was being forced upon us, and you guys have to understand, you know, what's happening. And we try and be fiscally responsible to the homeowners. I mean, that's our responsibility as a board. So we saw a conflict there.
I understand. Certainly not trying to, you know, be divisive or force a conflict, like, and I don't know, I mean, I certainly, I tried, everything that I put out on social media, I tried to be honest and straightforward, and I don't think I have misrepresented anything with respect to how much things are going to cost or anything like that. But from my understanding, when, and Mike, you could probably speak to this, because you are more familiar with everything that ACIS did leading up to this contract, but as our contract was coming due for original town, for Sagamore, for downtown, when we were looking at vendors to give us like the options for pay-as-you-throw, for composting, for electric trash trucks, which we have talked about, but that's something that's also really nice to have in the community, and people seem to really like them, that the only way to make a contract like that be palatable to the vendors that were ready to bid on it was to have the potential for the Rock Creek market to be opened to those vendors, right? Like, they weren't going to bid on just 1,000 homes, they wanted to have 5,000 homes, you know. Mike, I don't know if you have any additional information to kind of add to that?
No, I think you captured that really well. Thank you.
Well, don't forget the Bushification of the garbage trucks.
Yeah.
So I mean, you know, like, I mean, that's another thing. The cost is-
Well, we're paying a premium for the electric garbage trucks, and that was a choice that the board made at the time, was to, again, in the spirit of trying to achieve the Sustainability Action Plan and reduce air emissions, we went with electric vehicles, with your garbage trucks.
So we don't know exactly what the numbers are going to look like in 2028, when we give the notice to the, when your contract expires, I think in June of 2028, something like that, July, what Republic's numbers are going to look like. So that's probably something that we're going to have to have a conversation-
And you may come up with a different vendor.
Yeah, I mean, but, you know, so that's going to be a subject for the town council to consider sometime in either 2027 or maybe in 2026, probably 2027, right?
So put yourself over on the board side and tell us, we're not against sustainability. How do we reconcile sustainability versus fiscal responsibility? I'm asking the question because I don't have a good answer to it.
I think, yes, again, the survey, you can quibble about it, but it was pretty dramatic in the results that we saw. The people that, our constituents unequivocally wanted us to continue the contract that we currently have.
One thing I, I know y'all have brought up that y'all tried to talk to the HOA over the last year or two, whatever. The only communications that made it to us were that you wanted to talk about areas of mutual concern. Nobody ever said, hey, we're looking at a different kind of trash contract for sustainability. You want to join and maybe see if we can come up with a good idea together? That never happened. And I don't know where the breakdown was, but had that happened two years ago, this might be a very different conversation right now. It might not even be happening right now, because we might have collaborated on something that we could get behind fiscally that would work for the sustainability goals. But that didn't happen. And so we end up with this notification that, oh, the town's taking it over, and we're not going to do it anymore. That's how it came off to us. And I feel like that could have been avoided with better communication. What we got from the town was very cryptic about what they wanted to talk about. We're like, well, what does that even mean? Can they just tell us? And we emailed back to say, can you please tell us what the agenda items are? We never got that.
And I totally agree with you, Rachel. Like, communication is paramount, and we can always do a better job, and that's why it's so good that we're sitting here tonight, meeting and talking through all these issues, and we should do it regularly. I think that will, I think, solve a lot of problems. You know, from my perspective, like, when we had the beginning discussions after, like, our ACIS committee reported to the town council about their recommendations for this contract that was rolled out to original town, Sagamore and downtown, there was a line in that memo that said, like, we reached out to the Rock Creek HOA and didn't hear anything. So like, that's the representation, I don't know what, who said what, who made that representation, but that's in a staff memo, that's going to the town council, that's a public document that's sitting here in front of us. And so like, you know, I don't have any reason to dispute that, right? And I'm like, okay, well, that's unfortunate. So who did that go to? Did it go to your predecessors?
Or one of the managers?
Your predecessor, you know, who knows?
Well, last year, it would have been the previous management company.
It wasn't this management company.
So, you know, in a perfect world, like, that wouldn't have been in the memo, because it would have been, we reached out to the HOA and sat down with them, and this is what they said, and, you know, then we could have had a more fulsome conversation about.
That is a challenge. I mean, in addition to all the, you know, all of us who are relatively new, long before, you know, I signed up for this, you know, the HOA went through, like, what, five management companies in five years, or something along those lines?
Easy forward, five years.
Which doesn't help.
So, I mean, I guess, like, Darius, to your point in terms of, like, balancing sustainability-
Versus fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility, like, from my perspective, and I'm just speaking for myself, so like, others, please chime in, I don't need the town to take over Rock Creek's trash, right? Like, I don't need that. I didn't run for council on that platform, that's not what keeps me up at night. I support the direction that the council has gone in, and if the HOA came to us and said essentially that they've got some sort of comparable deal with whether it's Waste Connections or somebody else that would, you know, include a, not an opt-in basis, but a mandatory kind of rollout-
By the way, we asked for a bid on that.
Composting, you know, pay-as-you-throw, basically all the things that are in the contract that we approved, I'd certainly be all ears. Electric trash trucks, you know, like, just have apples-to-apples comparison. This is what the town is currently offering, and this is what the HOA is willing to do.
Though I think it kind of, you almost need a menu, a approach where it's, this is going to cost this, and this is going to cost this, because as Andrew said, I get the arguments that over time, people may start composting, though, you know, with all due respect, we don't know that. It's very possible, I'm not saying that it wouldn't happen, but we don't know that. And certainly not in the kind of numbers that you're talking about, so it becomes comparable to-
But we know that they won't opt in.
Probably.
Because they have.
Now, if you ask people, what do you think about electric trash trucks, then I would very, very much, if I were a voter, want to know how much of this amount is driven by that one piece, because I think, you know, probably the support for electric trash trucks, if the number is high, and it's driving a very big part of the differential between the two contracts, I can see people very rationally saying, no, I really don't buy that, that's going to have a huge impact on sustainability. It may move the needle, but it's going to be very small, so I'm not going to support that. So I can see getting that kind of competing bid that you're talking about, but it would have to be-
It's $5 a month to have electric trash trucks, pick up trash and recycling and composting in Superior. $5 a month.
Yeah, and I, look, we should-
And I'll just speak for myself, when I was opting in to the composting service, I was paying $15 a month just to opt into compost. Now, the town has gone out and put this out to bid, and it's one package, I'm actually saving $7 a month, because now that I can compost, I've downsized my 96-gallon garbage cart down to the 32-gallon garbage cart, because all the stuff that was filling up the 96-gallon was food waste, which is now getting composted. So I'm saving money. Now, I will acknowledge, not everybody's going to save money, some people, especially large families that have a lot of waste, will likely pay more money, but as was mentioned earlier, that's the point, is we're trying to provide an economic incentive for people to recycle, to make a different choice, rather than putting recycling in and compost in the garbage, they now have two other choices.
But I think that's Rachel's point.
And I would also say that, in my experience, if people have not been exposed to a service, such as what we're talking about, then all they know is the service that they have, and so that's their whole perspective, is, oh, well, I know, I get a 96-gallon garbage cart, a 96-gallon recycling cart picked up once a week, and that's what I know, and that's what I want. And when you give them options of different services, and they're exposed to new things, then, again, in my personal experience, I've seen people say, oh, I actually like this service better because it meets my need.
And I think there'll be a lot of that. I think, you know, what Rachel was saying is that there was a feeling on the board that, again, this wasn't really presented as, you know, let's have a robust discussion about the town, about what the options should be in this contract. Instead, it's a, we will come up with the, with the items that we think should be in the contract, and then if you guys can't show that you can match it, well, you know, we're going to stick with ours. There was not a discussion about, you know, what the options should be to begin with. And, look, again, to me, this is sort of a political problem at the end of the day. We've said, you guys have the full authority to do this. I think that when it's presented, it should be presented as, you know, this is going to cost people, and the average user in Rock Creek is probably going to pay quite a bit more. That's an honest way to spin it, and then, you know, if the voters, you know, if they agree with you, fine.
How long is your Republic contract?
Five years for the option to extend? Four?
So you're committed to five years?
Four.
Four. Four more years?
No.
Because we're 2029?
Yeah, I think our effective date was April 2025, if I remember, and it's four years, I just-
2029. So that's almost a year past. The reason I was asking that question is, I got to come back to Clayton's point, it would sure have been nice, and can we even be involved now, saying, you know, we're not the typical, we're not your typical homeowner of who is using Republic now. We just aren't. We're a totally different type of homeowner, we're big homes. And that's not the average of what you have.
Although, to play devil's advocate-
That's going to have nothing to do with-
We could actually use Republic to say, you bigger households that generate more trash should pay more, because you're using more service.
One way, I think, to-
But they don't now.
Darius, to answer your point.
But they don't now, I understand, but that, but the argument could be made that they should.
We're not big government. We reside in this town. We're not, you know, trying to do what the federal government tries to do to the states or the masses. We're your neighbors, right? And we, we're beholden to everything that we pass or we don't pass here, and we have to abide by that. And I think the paradigm understanding that maybe wasn't communicated well enough to Rock Creek neighborhoods was that the paradigm has to shift, and it has to shift in a way now, because we've let this go on for too long of not composting. Recycling has only really come on board really the last seven years, when people are really starting to recycle now, and composting, you know, and I think, Mike, and I think ACIS has made a really good point of saying that there's a tremendous amount of methane gases that's released by dumping compostable food waste into landfills, and we need to correct that, so.
And yard waste.
And yard waste, exactly, yeah.
No, it's the CO2 that gets released in the landfill.
Well, that's what's created out of the methane, though.
No, no.
We want the methane, that's what gets released in the composting. You're actually correct.
But it becomes CO2 if it's in the landfill.
Creates the problems with the environment. So, I mean, anytime you shift something like this, you have to push people into that. And that, I think, is the one thing that we need to be better at making the residents understand, it's not going to be a comfortable shift, and it's going to be a push, and I know a lot of people don't like to hear that, and a lot of people who claim to be politicians don't like to say it because it costs them votes, but I am all in favor of kind of nudging people towards a better, a better future, because if we do enact these things, we are going to be in a much better place because of it, and yes, there is a bit of pain, but because we live in this community, it's shared pain. And that pain is in the form of a tax, and again, I don't have a particular problem with what you're suggesting doing, I just don't think-
It's not a tax.
Well, but it is, Mike.
It's not a tax, it's a fee for service, that's not a tax.
But again, people's costs are going-
We bid this out, contractor said, this level of service is going to cost this much money, that's not a tax, that's a fee.
Except that it's a mandatory expense, that you're presenting people a menu of options, and they can choose among those options, and if their choice is something similar to their current level of service, they are going to be paying more money. It's just like, you know, when you guys had this debate on, when it was around the fences, there was a big concern raised around, well, we can't go tax other people in town to pay for this expense. This trash contract for the people whose costs will go up, it's effectively a tax. You can call it something else.
It's no different than getting the venti coffee at Starbucks or choosing to get the small one that peaks. It's a fee that you're paying for the services, not a tax.
But I go into Starbucks, and I can decide to not buy coffee at all, I can decide not to go into Starbucks.
Right, because waste service, waste removal service is essentially a utility.
Which I agree, and utilities charge taxes, and they charge fees. But again, it operates like, you don't call it something else.
You don't pay a tax to Excel Energy, you pay a fee to Excel Energy for them delivering the electricity and the natural gas to your home, you don't pay a tax.
I think we're getting caught up in semantics over taxes versus fees, and I think the bottom line of what Clay was trying to say is that, when it came to the fences, we, people don't want to share the responsibility of the cost, but when it comes to promoting sustainability and making different choices, the town is saying, we think the people that are going to pay more should help pay for the cost. So the philosophy of who's going to pay and what's fair seems to be different on either of those issues.
People are asking for this. Our surveys show the priorities of people in this town overwhelmingly support open space, trails, sustainability, clean air, all of those things. They tell us constantly.
In the abstract.
In the abstract, but when they know that it costs more.
But it informs our strategic decisions about the direction that we're going. We have the sustainability plan, and we've talked a lot about, why do we have this if we're not going to take actions, that have been supported by the community in these surveys, the data that we have, to show that primarily people are in support of these things.
Did your surveys ask if they want?
When you break it down to just a single cost for trash, then that is like a different conversation than how much money from the community we pay on, put on open space, how much money do we spend on events that are for sustainability efforts? And so you can't like take that out of the larger encompassing direction that we got from the community that these things are-
Okay, I want to agree with you, and I want to go back to Jason, because he was making the same point, that these are good things to do. I spent my career as an analytic consultant, technical support to sales, we were selling software, okay? And what we found out was, the more talking that the buyer did in terms of what their problems were and what they wanted, we want sustainability, I'm going to bring it back to you, is if you go back to them and do that, they will say, yes, how much is it going to cost me, because I'm going to pay for it? And we, as a board, are saying to you, that's not what we heard. We heard from you, you are going, we are selling you, and you're going to pay for it, not would you like to buy it? Those are two totally different constructs, and I've watched that through 40 years of my career, and I'll tell you, it worked a whole lot better if the people receiving the service bought it.
Or bought into the idea.
Bought into.
I mean, these surveys, people say, yes, I support sustainability, but when push comes to shove, did you ask- comes to shove, did you ask them if they supported paying more for a particular service in order to meet that goal? And maybe they do. I pay more on my electricity because my house can't do solar because my roof sucks. But I pay more for the sustainable service from Excel, even though I could get cheaper electricity by getting the, you know, the fossil fuel driven electricity. So I think there's a lot of people that are willing to pay more, but there's a lot of people that are not. And I think that it has to be clear to people, but you're asking them to pay for it. And I don't think that was the case in this whole trash contract discussion, either with the public or with the HOA.
So what do we do now? Because I'm a crazy person. I compost in my backyard. Like, I have a garden. No one ever sees my compost because it never disappears from my backyard. But, so, I truly do not care what trash service we use. But I feel like I take the responsibility of what our membership wants seriously. We have this contract with this auto renewal structure that gives us an absurdly economical trash program that we've been told we would not get in the open market. It's just, we've been grandfathered into a thing that is incredibly cheap. And when we ask our constituents, they really like it. That's, I guess, the thing. Ultimately, like, we can make them happy and keep it. But once we do not, we get rid of it, it will never come back.
That's right.
So-
How many people responded to your survey?
Able to add things into it somewhere.
Unfortunately, they just would not accept composting unless a ridiculous, almost dulling the contract.
Yeah. They don't want us to keep this contract.
Yeah, that's right. They're trying not to make it easy for us to-
Probably similar to the IGA. Some people made some calls that they would like to take back. But we have it. And it's a thing our members know about.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand that point. And like, you ask me, are you happy with the service? Yeah. Do you want to pay more for it? No. I understand why people would answer that way. But, you know, ultimately, like, the policy decisions that the town council makes are, you know, informed by a lot of different things, right? Like, you know, one data point is the survey from the Rock Creek HOA residents. Another data point is our sustainability action plan. And, you know, we need to make the call in terms of what we think is in the best interest of the entire community. That's, you know, what we do. And if we do a bad job of it, we don't get reelected. So, I mean-
But the point is, that you were making was, where do we go from here?
But what I'm hearing is, so you've got this grandfathered in, very cheap economic, economical contract that could get extended.
By 3% a year.
But will not be able to actually roll out compost. And then if you're going to be rolling out compost, which then gets it closer to aligning with the goals that actually the town wants to do from a sustainability perspective, then you double. And then we're talking about actually apples to apples in terms of what the town is looking at with the contract. So basically, it's like, do you continue the status quo and not reach the sustainability goals? Or do you change it and try to go for the sustainability goals? Sounds like the Rock Creek HOA wants to maintain the status quo and not reach the sustainability goals. And the town council has decided that we would prefer to go after the sustainability goals.
Well, I wouldn't, as I said, because you're defining, because the sustainability goals require not just composting, but the composting be mandatory. That's the difference. I mean, composting is available under our schedule.
Under opt-in.
It's just an opt-in. So that's the difference.
You can opt out. You can opt out. So like 65% is the take rate right now, like under the, so people have opted out. But that's-
But they don't get any money back from it.
Better than 2%.
Right. Yeah, as Darius said, they don't get money back, right?
No, they're opting out and just not getting a can.
Correct.
But they're paying for it. Yeah. So the question is, you know, what's, what's the primary driver? And, you know, like ultimately, it's a binary decision, right? That's either you're going to be going up to getting up-
Looking from the HOA perspective, we have two mandates as board members. Fiscal responsibility is one of them that I said, and standards of the community. Isn't that essentially what we do? Unless I'm missing something, we don't have sustainability as one of our mandates. We understand that you do. I don't know how to put those two together.
So let me, I hear that, the theme that I keep hearing is the HOA is going to have to pay for this. In the garbage contract, I, as a resident of downtown Superior, pay my garbage bill to the town, and the town then remits that to the service provider.
Right.
This, I would imagine that there would be a similar scenario where the residents of Rock Creek are getting billed by the town for the service, and it's not a cost to the Rock Creek HOA.
Oh, we understand that.
Cost the HOA rep.
I hear that you understand that, but I keep hearing the phrase, well, we will have to pay. The board will have to pay. The board doesn't have to pay because the residents are getting billed for the service.
It's the membership. It's the membership.
The member residents will still be paying more for the service.
And we have a fiscal responsibility to them.
I don't, I think we can agree to disagree on whether or not they'll be paying more because right now, we don't have what it would actually cost to provide that service. We have the data points of what the rest of Superior is paying. And for people that had opted into composting service, they're now paying less.
What is the data you would feel you need that to reflect that the residents want their current contract versus your sustainability targets? What is the data set that? All I got is an overwhelming voice that says they do. They want to keep the current contract over the sustainability targets.
How many people responded to your survey?
Oh, man.
What's it, about 25%?
600 and some.
600?
25%.
It was higher than most things.
Surprising.
That is surprising.
I don't think our email could open that up.
It's just a statistically significant number.
Oh, is it, yeah.
We thought so.
No, it isn't.
Look, your point is that if people don't have to do something, or if they're not used to doing something, they're not going to do it. And that's human nature.
Darius, one thing our survey did not do, though, is ask people, would you pay more to meet these sustainability goals?
I thought we did have a question like that in there.
We didn't ask, I don't think.
You can ask that question.
Yeah, I don't think that we considered that particular value within our questionnaire. We just were looking at-
But there were a number of options that sort of addressed that, that say, these are possibilities.
I'm just speaking for myself. I think with the data that we've looked at for the, over the past decade plus, what our diversion rates are as a town, they're embarrassing. And we need to do better. And that sustainability goals are very important. So the only way to actually like substantially like move the needle, I'm like, I'm not going to be convinced otherwise, is to have mandatory composting that is offered community-wide, that is not reliant on people opting into it. The only way that you're going to change the behavior is to make it easy for people and remove those barriers.
I just wish it had been presented differently. I'm in 100% agreement with you.
So like, I think that like, that is kind of like where my starting point is, is that like, I think that that is a really valuable goal and is consistent with us meeting the goals set forth in our sustainability action plan, which is something that our community as a whole is supportive of. They were here in public when we passed it. They were engaged throughout the process as it was drafted. People ran on it, you know? It's something that's like inherent in like the fabric of this community. This community does-
And you're including Rock Creek when you say that.
Yeah, the entire-
Okay, well then let's send out another survey with those kinds of statements as an upfront, and then ask the questions after that.
So, you know, and then like separate and apart from that, like, so like, I think that that's really the solution, right? Is like to opt that in. We make decisions as the town council, and, you know, we don't, we don't send every single decision out to the community to see like, what should we do on this one? Like, you know, that's what elections are for. And as representative democracy, we get elected and we make the decisions. And if we do a bad job, we don't get reelected. So like, I think if we don't have an option from the HOA that is comparable, where we're actually like offering composting, it's rolled out to the community, not relying on an opt-in, I don't really see any reason to continue talking because we've got a path forward to move forward and roll the entire community under the contract that we have currently with Republic that we adopted in April.
So I guess, do other, the diversion targets you're talking about, do other towns include yard waste in that number?
Yeah, that's what, that's what, well, I mean, I don't know. So you're talking about the yard?
Yeah, the dumps.
Yard waste facility?
Next to the dog park, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if those communities have similar facilities.
Right, I'm just at like, is that?
All I know, all I know is what the diversion rates say. I don't know how they're necessarily compiled, who's compiling them. I think that they're, you know, EcoCycle and others are compiling those reports. And, you know, they typically look at, this is what trash service is, this is what recycling is, this is what composting is. And that then gets added together to calculate what your diversion rate is.
So what, is there any information set that our membership could provide that would, your team would feel necessary, or would feel compelling to then let the town, let the HOA keep its contract and renew it moving forward?
From the, from the membership?
Yes.
I mean, I don't need to hear anything from, from the membership. What I need to see from the Rock Creek HOA is-
No, I'm saying to continue the current contract. Is there any information set you could be given from the membership that would then-
If he means from the HOA, like, the HOA can ask questions from the membership.
Sorry.
I mean, from, what I'd want to see from the board would be like, here's a bid for composting.
Right, I'm saying-
We tried to get it.
What if, right. I guess going back to, you're trying to get apples to apples.
Right.
And I'm saying, what if people really want oranges?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying you have to consider that. You have no legal basis that you have to. Like, you can do whatever you want. But is there a data set that would, that you would find compelling enough that would then, you would consider allowing the HOA to keep its trash?
You mean compelling enough to override the sustainability goals that are currently what they're aiming for?
I guess, that's how you want to use it. I don't know.
Because that would really be, I think, that would be the key point. And I think Mark has already said that.
Yeah, because you're saying you can't hit the sustainability goals without trash.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that would be basically, is there any data set you want, that, if there's any data set presented to you from the membership of Rock Creek, that you would then say, okay, this is what the people want. They want that. Because of that, we'll let you keep your trash contract the way it is?
So I'll, speaking for myself, I'll give you an analogy, right? Everybody's favorite airport.
We have none.
They're currently filling their tanks with leaded fuel.
Correct.
Right? Oranges. Okay? I think that they should be using apples.
Which they could.
On leaded fuel. And no amount of pilots can say, I would rather put oranges in these planes that are polluting the town of Superior.
Due to cost.
You can survey all the pilots, and they can all say, I want oranges. It'll be cheaper for me to put oranges in these planes instead of apples. I think that that is a bad policy decision.
What of your constituents, though?
Same.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that gets to my point. There is no-
But that's just me. I don't want to speak for-
And that's, because ultimately, if that's what you guys, the way you guys feel, and the question is, can you guys get a better contract offering the same services than what you got?
I didn't like the Republic contract. I liked the concept very much, but I did not like the contract. It just, it annoyed me. It felt bad. It felt like you weren't taking into consideration the largest households. And you didn't have to because you weren't serving them with the smaller population that grew in Rock Creek.
What we could have done is taken over the contract right away. What we did was to not force the HOA to be essentially in breach of your contract with Waste Connections, we allowed you to perform it through the expiration of that contract. You know, so like, we could have bid out the entirety of the town of Superior, but to not make things more difficult for you and your lawyer, we thought it would be better to allow that to happen. But we could have-
Maybe we just appreciate it.
Yeah.
What we don't have is an option for very large families who really are going, even if they did everything properly, they're still going to fill up the 96 gallon every week, just because they have four children, two adults and four, that's six people.
We don't know that. We don't know that. The data that we have right now, that is in the town council packet, which you should take a look at for Monday night, shows kind of what the take rate is on the carts.
Do they have household size in there?
They don't. They don't. But we do have, I mean, we do have-
Most of the households-
A lot of the households are big.
Are similar to, I mean, Sagamore.
Sagamore, Cold Creek Crossing, all the homes in original town that have been rebuilt after the fire. I mean, we're not dealing with the small homes that existed pre-fire. These are comparable in size and certainly in price.
They are.
If you look at Zillow, right? Like, and the packet that's in, the information that's in our packet shows a 10% take rate on the large cans, 60% of people are taking the 65 gallon medium sized cans, and 30% are taking the small cans. Will those numbers be different once Rock Creek is rolled into it? Probably. Will they be substantially different? I don't know. But we'll only know once it's actually happening.
And even for a large family, if they're using the 96 now, if you think about the percentage that's diverted if you're composting, you'd have empty space in a 96. I mean, you'd be fine going down to a medium size because that-
30 to 40%.
I think it's 64, isn't it?
Moved into a different bin.
The medium size.
I think it's 35, 65, 95.
Something.
I mean, that's true. We have a family of five living in our house, and we don't, it's rare that our trash is all the way filled up. And that's if we've been like going through the garage and getting rid of stuff. You know, it's not, it's not typical for us to fill the whole 196.
And I don't know why you guys didn't set up an arrangement to have what's called the donation bin. So instead of putting in the garbage, you're actually donating it you see to a worthwhile cause. But I'm just giving you more.
Does that exist?
What? No, I'm just coming, I'm thinking out of box.
That's a good idea.
It's not offered by Waste Management.
Let's not add complex.
I'm coming up with new ideas.
So Neil has joined us. Thank you for coming.
Sorry I'm late. There's a cat meeting that was running parallel to this meeting as well, so.
We, so we've been talking about the trash contract. We already talked about the fences. One of the things that I threw out as just something to potentially chew on when we were talking about the fence discussion was, so the HOA has a 10% cap on how much they can raise their dues on an annual basis. So one thing in terms of, you know, a global compromise and just a way to, to bring this all full circle, talking about the trash contract, the HOA's got a grandfathered really economical deal that if, if they roll composting into it on a mandatory basis, where it's not opt-in, it's given to all residents, it would essentially double the contract price that they're currently paying, right? And make it somewhat more comparable to what the Republic contract would look like.
And full size, 96 gallons.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Because Waste Management doesn't have the smaller-
Waste Connections.
They have smaller bins.
But it's not eligible, Rock Creek's not eligible for the smaller ones.
It may be for townhomes. Remember?
Oh, yeah.
We're looking at it.
As Andrew mentioned, we would, if we were trying to get a new contract now, we would never in a million years get the rate that we're getting.
Yeah. So we threw out the idea that, like, at least speaking for myself, that I don't need to necessarily have the town take over the Rock Creek neighborhood, provided that the Rock Creek- provided that the Rock Creek HOA, if they maintain the contract, was going to be delivering essentially the exact same things that we're delivering in the, the Republic contract. So the pay-as-you-throw, the electric trash contract, electric trash trucks, and the mandatory composting rolled out community-wide. But it sounds like that's probably not an option. So the, the one kind of global compromise here when we were talking about fences was, we've got about a $500,000 line item in the Rock Creek HOA budget for the Waste Connections trash contract. If that goes away because the town is taking it over, then the Rock Creek HOA could essentially use that $500,000 on an annual basis and potentially start funding a reserve to fund the replacement of the fences community-wide. And maybe as a compromise, the town would then continue to paint the fences in the interim. And that was just bringing you up to speed, it wasn't necessarily something that everybody was bought in, but it was something that I threw out.
This is a bridge, like, is a bridge to continuity for the, or, or the HOA?
Because that then helps the HOA with the 10% threshold increase problem that it currently has under its dues. Obviously, the money that was spent on the trash, if the town's paying for it, doesn't need to be in the Rock Creek HOA budget anymore. And the, the discussion from town council was that we still don't believe that we are responsible for the replacement of the fences, although-
We are very much on the other side.
The other side of that seems to disagree.
One way to look at what you proposed on that is that the town and the HOA would just be flip-flopping what they're paying for. You're going to eventually add the cost of trash collection for Rock Creek to your budget, which would be replacing your fence budget. We would be dropping our trash collection budget and replacing that where they-
They don't have a budget to replace fences.
We don't now, but-
Neither do they.
I know, but that's, but it's, it's a cost that will have to be factored in.
Correct.
So it's just basically, who's paying which cost? And I, it's kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other.
Hold on, it's not though, we don't have the right to do fence replacement. Right, didn't we talk about that issue once in our meetings, like, we don't have your-
It's on- It's questionable, I'll have to get back to you on that, and then we talked about that in the past. Like, it can be questioned a little, whether the HOA can go in and-
Because like, to your point about liability, we carry all of that plus some because it's now on town land and private property.
But the HOA has the ability, like, if, if I don't paint my house, you can paint my house and then bill me for it. The town can't do that.
I don't, we don't do it that way.
No, but you, you can, like, under the, that's the whole point of an HOA, it's like, you've got these covenants that say like, hey, you got to maintain the aesthetics of this community. And homeowner, if you don't, we can make you, the town, we don't care if you paint your house and we can't do that, right? So similarly with fences, you can also paint it, you can replace it. You have, and in those covenants, you have the right of access, which actually the town doesn't have.
Although there's two different things that you're talking about. One is whether the HOA has the right to proactively go in and replace or repair fences. That's different than what you're saying, is if you have your fence, you don't maintain or upkeep your fence. Yes, the HOA can go ahead, they can fine you, they can say you need to go ahead and do this and as a draconian move, which I would never recommend the HOA to do, but as the draconian move, they could go ahead and get a court order that says, yes, this person is not painting their fences, HOA, you have the right to go in there, paint the fences and bill that to that, to that owner. But those are two different things, one is you're not doing your, your responsibility. The other one is the HOA taking the proactive approach of going ahead and just doing it for everybody.
Yeah, but to Rachel's point in terms of like-
That's questionable.
Kind of shifting the responsibility for these kind of big ticket items. Yes, that, that is exactly what is happening. And to that whole, like, in a perfect world, kind of hypothetical that we had discussing earlier, in a perfect world, the town would be doing the trash for the community and HOA should be in charge of the aesthetics of their communities, making sure that the fences in those communities are maintained, in a perfect world. I know we're not living in a perfect world.
Accent the IGA and all that stuff, that would make sense.
But maybe we're getting closer to what a perfect world actually looks-
But that, your perfect world also again assumes facts not in evidence, which are that, that A, your existing obligation isn't what it is and defined by contract, and two, that the fences are only aesthetic. And again, they're not. You know, when you've got this separation between the homeowner's land and your land, the fences have a very much a functional, function. And, you know, so, I, I get if we were all starting from scratch, maybe that's the way it would be allocated, but we're not because of the existing contractual obligations of the town.
But, all that said, this is one way to skin the cat. Potential. This is one way to solve it. I'm not saying it is the way that needs to be, but it's one way.
And I'm not rejecting it, by the way, all I'm saying though is what it does in a way is, again, it ignores the existence of the IGA because the town can simply walk away from an obligation that it has under that agreement. And all you're really saying is that would free up enough money that the Rock Creek, some of the Rock Creek citizens would be paying less to the HOA than they currently are for trash. So it sort of, you know, it all comes out, you know, it kind of evens up things for the homeowners. But it means that the homeowners are essentially saying, yeah, town, you have this obligation to do fence maintenance, we're just letting you off of it.
No, actually, the homeowner's dues are, the total amount that they're going to have to pay, including trash, is going to increase for everybody. Because they're still going to be paying what they're paying and we're going to use it for fences. Now they're going to have to pay a trash contract to the town.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Just a question about the, as far as the existence of the IGA, even if the HOA were to, there was an agreement that we negotiated and the HOA started doing the fences, with that IGA still in place, and a future HOA board says, eh, we don't want to do anymore. Do the homeowners have a case to make to go back to the town and say, you got that IGA, you need to start pick up with the HOA, has been doing it?
I guess your, your point is, in order to resolve this, does it have to be about?
Well, do, do you need to dissolve the IGA ultimately?
So your, your, your question, Rachel, is 10 years down the road, the HOA's been maintaining the fences and then decides they don't want to do it anymore?
Because of the IGA.
And then you've still got this IGA in, in force that still exists.
What do the homeowners do in that situation?
Yeah, do they, is, is there a-
So they contact the town and then the town says, we don't care. Right?
Then there becomes a case.
We're going to say, we don't have covenants, those are HOA covenants, that your HOA board is electing not to enforce.
Right.
But that's not true, because the HOA does not have an obligation to maintain the fences themselves, that is for sure.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm just saying like, the, so, the town, the town certainly doesn't have an opinion on homeowners painting their fences.
Except if the future HOA just says, we don't want to do that anymore, it truly is a situation that HOA did it out of goodness of their heart because they weren't actually obligated to by an agreement that the town actually is right now.
Well, I mean, I'm not the HOA's lawyer, but I, I would presume that the HOA could take care of this by way of some sort of governing documents and amendments.
But how would that supersede the IGA? I don't understand that.
Well, it, it, it's completely independent of the IGA.
It is?
I mean-
Help me, Stan.
The HOA is not a party to the IGA.
Would the town be amenable to?
The way you're putting the R and M mark is correct.
Yeah. In terms of the landscape fee, if the HOA were to take that over, would the town be willing to reduce the landscape fee? For, since they've been collecting it ostensibly?
I actually wanted to talk about that anyway and I'm glad you brought it back up, but the landscape fee, which more than just Rock Creek is paying, has not been self-sustaining in years.
Oh, I know.
That should have been raised, so the fact that the fences wouldn't be painted, there wouldn't be a reduction because it hasn't covered it anyway, the fences have been paid out of the general fund. It hasn't even been paid out of the landscape fee because it hasn't been enough to cover landscaping fences, all the things that it's supposed to cover, it hasn't done that in a while. That's why the whole discussion started about landscape fees is, we should not be pulling money out of general funds to cover what we just need to increase fees to cover.
Right.
Because it should be self-sustaining.
I think the point I was trying to make is that if the HOA were to take this over, there needs to be an official document, contract, ballot measure, whatever it is that, that dissolves the IGA and transfers.
Dissolves your responsibility, essentially.
So I think that needs to be a clear distinction legally. If the HOA did decide to take that on, I think the town needs to clearly divest itself of that obligation from the contract that you have right now.
Exactly. I guess, I'm sorry, do you know if there's any sunset for the HOA? Like, a lot of PUDs will go through a 20, 30 year period, the HOA will dissolve itself and the town will take over. Is that at all within your charter?
The HOA will exist to the end of time.
And that's kind of what we're talking about.
I don't know that, I would guess no, that there's-
That would be extremely difficult.
I-
His question is, is the HOA-
Have a sunset.
A lot of PUDs are set that way.
Okay.
Those fences will never rot because they've been-
The HOA can be resolved, there's like a-
But they will burn.
Right now, we're in perfect-
No, 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 the members, the members, it would be-
With 67%?
Two thirds. It'd be incredibly difficult, let's just say that way.
Well, so, exactly, yeah. So, I mean, my point on that is, I mean, we're just talking about a situation that is not going to exist either way, but what I would like to think that if we're going to be moving forward with a contract that, yeah, I'm the dissenting opinion here, I think this is so flimsy written that we are on some sort of culpability for the fences.
Is there, is there any way to start?
No, look at this thing, it's garbage. This is, you guys are lawyers, really, you think this is-
But it's flimsy written, not even defined what-
But it's our garbage and it's not taking my garbage.
Yeah, no. We sign this, we are going to take care of this for you guys and now we're trying to tell you we don't want to do it any longer.
But for open space fencing, what is that? Because to me-
Exactly, no, that's what I'm agreeing with.
I don't read that as fencing on private property that happens to-
There is a diagram with that, that shows what the tracks are and where those fences-
Correct.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. But a lot of things have changed since I've drawn it. I mean, Town 15 is now town property, Water Flare didn't exist. There's many parcels that have changed ownership in the 40, 30 years.
That's true.
Correct.
And now, there's been no amendment to that agreement since then, right? Like, we didn't own Coyote Ridge, now we do. Right, so, I mean, there's fundamental changes, it's hard to say this thing is still gospel when the ink doesn't even make sense.
Which is why I think that there needs to be, first, a conversation about what to do with it, how to split that responsibility equitably and not have us arguing about, you know, lawsuits and, you know, all this stuff. Clearly, there's something that needs to change.
I think a clarification of like, everybody's responsibilities, and this is, you know, getting back to the whole discussion about, you know, maintenance is one thing, replacement is another. And like, for a while, we were having the discussion of like, well, maybe we were open to, to continuing to paint and, you know, do some maintenance, but like, we wanted to be abundantly clear that we're not signing up for the $10 million capital cost of replacing all the fences in town, right? So like, having some sort of rewrite of what the community's expectations should be, I think makes all the sense in the world. I think from a timing perspective, given the, you know, kind of sunsetting of the January, June, or July 2028 trash contract, does provide an opportunity for, you know, maybe we say, okay, we're going to, we'll start painting the fences for the next couple of years and then we take over the trash contract and then the HOA says, okay, like, now we're going to start funding this-
But I think Rachel's point is critical.
And we have, we have a document between the HOA and the town, not the town-
But anything with respect to the legal document has to be addressed at the same time.
Right, we have to-
Yeah, no, I mean, that's why we have lawyers to, on behalf of the HOA and lawyers on the behalf of the town.
But it's complicated because it went to a ballot issue. That IGA was approved by the voters of Superior.
It's complicated by a million different-
It is, and I think that what you're suggesting makes sense, but it kind of requires two things, that you, you get the clarification that you want around, does it include replacement? Yet, as like, multiple people have said though, the cleanest solution is still for the town to increase the, the landscape fee in some way to cover whatever that obligation ends up being, whether it's paint, whether it's paint plus some level of maintenance, because you guys have the flexibility under the, the terms of, of the landscape fee to do that with, you know, a simple vote, we do not. So, you know, for us, it becomes an issue, you know, how much can we increase dues per year? You know, we can't segregate between, between various kinds of property owners. By far, the simplest solution is, give you the, the clarity you want around what your upper end exposure is, while the town adjusts the terms of the landscape fee to, to address whatever your obligation is. I think it's far more complicated, it becomes a lot harder to deal with and you're essentially going around rewriting an entire agreement that was part in parcel of a, of an initiative that was, you know, approved, that was approved by the voters, that would be required to just completely, you know, shift everything and start over, it's just not necessary. Again, the, the, the problem that you guys have, thanks to your predecessors, is that, you know, under the IGA, those fees should have been adjusted as all these other things happened in the town, but they didn't. So you're kind of stuck with that, but you still have the mechanism in there to change that fee up and down and to allocate it in, in a fair way.
But, but the important point you're making, Clayton, this is really critical, is we can't treat homeowners differentially.
Yeah.
They can.
I know, that's what I said.
No, you said that, but I want to broadcast that because that's a very important piece of the whole argument you're making.
Just because we can, doesn't mean we can't.
I have a question.
You know, to have, like, if my landscape fee was $50 per month than Stephanie's because she's got, you know, a much longer fence, that's not going to be a very easy sell.
Well, do you, you think it's an easy sell for us to go back and tell the residents, hey, there's this signed contract that the town entered into, but they don't want to actually deliver the services?
And so you have no-
So you're going to continue, they are going to continue to collect the money under the contract, mind you, but they're not going to do the obligation, but you guys should be okay with that?
But so if I, fast forward what you just said, the HOA gets out of everything, right? Not doing fences, not doing trash, what is the function of the HOA?
Aesthetics.
No, I mean, you, you're still going to be collecting dues at that point.
Aesthetics.
No, we would, no. We would reduce our dues.
It would reduce our dues. If we didn't have trash, we would reduce our dues.
Right, but we, we'd still function.
Yeah.
But we don't need a lot of money to function.
We'd be focusing mostly on the covenant, stuffing Christmas lights, which we're having.
Yeah, thank you, by the way.
And, and did you say Christmas lights?
That was for you, Mark, by the way.
I think we've kind of beat everything to death. We call it into it and you guys regroup and talk among yourselves and we'll do the same and we'll have follow-up meetings and in the meantime, these two will talk about, you know, how do we come to some agreement that prevents us from, you know, needing to file something we prefer not to, but we don't want to risk statute limitations running out.
So, I guess, so just a logistical challenge, I want to share everybody's story. Like, we do not know if the HOA can replace fences. That is an open question.
True.
I mean, Stan is unable at this point to give us a permanent-
We'll talk about that on Thursday.
Right, right, just I wanted to-
It's a question we don't have to solve for.
Yeah, well, if we take on the responsibility of the fence maintenance-
If you assume that that would include replacement.
I will not advise somebody replacing my fence. I don't think anybody else would either.
It's back to, we don't have, do we, it's not the U, it's the town space, it's like, do we have the right to be able to do these things? And I, at the moment, we, it's an open question.
Well, it's, the town fence, we're, we're going to maintain those.
But the proper, we'd have to get on your property to do that work.
I don't think we're talking about your town.
That's true, I mean, it could be, that could be worked out.
My bad, I used the wrong word.
That's true.
So, so behind my house is open space, that is town property.
Correct.
So say it again, Rachel, we have to-
Do we?
Get on town property to maintain the fence.
And will the homeowners be allowed to do that, or their contractors? So-
We have a process in place for that.
Right, so there might need to be a blanket agreement that says, anybody getting their fence fixed, their contractors, so that we don't have to do it every time.
Yeah, if a resident needs access to the open space, they contact the town and we work.
Well, we want to avoid them having to contact the town every single time, that's not-
We need a blanket.
We, yeah, it's going to have to be a blanket agreement. Yeah, they don't want us calling every time either.
Comforter, what kind of blanket?
For the purpose of discussions amongst our own bodies, I have a question. Is the town amenable in any way to an ongoing shared cost arrangement?
I don't know. For what?
For the fences.
Kind of like what we used to do with the, the Christmas lights?
Maybe, I'm thinking in terms of, the town's concern is replacement, the town is clearly obligated by the IGA to at least maintain and paint. Is there any potential for the town to stick to that and the HOA perhaps agree to take on and start setting up a reserve fund for the replacement costs? Is there a possibility of a negotiation that maintains the town's current level of service but has the HOA take on the responsibility for the bigger part of it?
I'm I'm open to greater solutions.
The first thing that comes to mind for me is just the feedback we got from staff on staffing and the ability to perform the tasks because we are understaffed already. And so that just just to keep that in mind, that like for us to continue or maintain something, I think it would involve not just the cost of the actual maintenance, but who, how, like how it's gonna be done and the cost for that side of it too.
Do y'all have contractors that come in and do it at this point or are they town workers?
Contractors.
They're contractors.
But we gotta oversee it and we have.
Okay.
Stan, do you have other HOA clients?
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm curious, because this is my first kind of experience living in an HOA community. But I imagine that this question has arisen before where a community fence has reached the end of its useful life. What does a HOA typically do in Colorado?
Most master planned communities own all the open space. So the fence is on all HOA property. So that's where we reserve, that's why you have reserve funds. It's a planned replacement over time. I mean, these reserve funds are 30 year plans. Yeah, I would say you have a unique situation with your, you know. It's very unique. What happened here, and this is something really the crux of it, is that you had a metro districts that were created with this purpose of maintaining the landscaping in your community, including maintaining the fences. Those were created when this community was built for for whatever reason. So it wasn't put on the HOA to do that. You had metro districts that were created for that specific purpose. In 2003.
Well, they also had the pools and.
Right, 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 right. So, yeah, yeah, there were a whole bunch of things. But also specifically, as you saw in the IGA, you know, it included fence maintenance. So but you had these metro districts that were created 20, 30 years ago with the purpose of doing landscaping work in the community, including maintaining the fences. In 2003, for efficiencies, cost reasons, whatever it was, there was a decision to go ahead and shift that, all the work that your metro districts are doing to the town. The metro districts were dissolved, they went to a ballot question, your citizens, I couldn't find this anywhere, but I'm assuming your citizens approved it. And both the metro districts were dissolved and the city agreed to, the town, the town agreed to take on that responsibility. So that's a very unique situation as compared to a typical HOA, as Kelly said, where the, like my community.
But the voters didn't approve the agreement.
Yes, it did. That was on the ballot.
The agreement?
The dissolution of the.
They approved the dissolution.
They didn't approve the agreement.
Well, it was part of the IGA, so the IGA was.
They didn't approve the IGA.
They, well, they did, because, I mean, I mean, you definitely would argue that you're approving the dissolution because there was an IGA that directs the the parameters of what the dissolution was. So if you're a voter.
Do you have the ballot language?
We do have it, actually.
Can you say it to him?
I think I might have.
Yeah, I think you have.
I'd like to just see what the voters actually voted on.
And the IGA, like the second line of it adds an plan of dissolution. So that that is where all of the details around the dissolution.
It also specified that the mill levy had to pass. It specified that the mill levy had to pass by the voters in order for the metro districts to be dissolved and the IGA to take that.
I mean, I think basically if you're a voter, you're thinking, okay, am I gonna vote yes or no to dissolve this this metro district? You're gonna be voting yes or no based on the IGA. That's gonna sort of be, you know, your decision points. Okay, there's an IGA in place, so yes, we will dissolve, I'll vote yes to dissolve the metro district because I know that all the work that the metro district was doing is now gonna be taken over and divided by the town. That's why I would vote yes on that. Otherwise, you know, but what I said, that was the assurance that was given at that time.
I'd love to see, I just haven't seen that.
Any question?
Do you have your, I don't have my HOA email on my phone.
I do, but I.
I do, what am I looking?
I was never able to find his email that had the ballot.
At any rate, I think that.
You know what I can't find is I cannot find the court case that should have been filed.
The orders.
Oh, with the county.
I just got.
Do you have that? I I searched ISIS and nothing pops up for me showing the court case that's authorized the dissolution.
So you want the order?
Could use to read. I searched a lot for that, like, it doesn't, I mean, I searched so many iterations of Superior, Town of Superior, Metro Districts, and none of it was.
It's the associates that did that, I don't understand. It's an unfortunate acronym. I mean, I I I think that, let me know what your deadline is for your statute of limitations argument because that would be good to know. I I don't think we're necessarily gonna solve everything tonight, but I think we've made some good progress on kind of understanding where we're at. And I'm hopeful that, like, get us the ballot language and your deadline on the statute of limitations. I'm willing to entertain Rachel's proposal for some sort of shared deal. I'm also willing to entertain kind of this notion of maybe restarting some fence maintenance with the HOA taking over in 2028 when the trash contract goes away. Just because that seems like an opportune time. Look into that a little more, maybe it's a crazy idea, maybe not. But maybe it's a way to kind of fix this going forward.
Well, and I do, yeah, one thing I'd like to see, and I don't know what mechanism it needs to take, but I think everyone has said the communication, you know, here is not ideal on on perhaps both sides. Though I'm very willing to say that, you know, HOA played more than a substantial role in some of that. We need to have some mechanism of like doing this more regularly. Then it wouldn't need to be three hours because we will be dealing with little discrete issues. But, you know, I think there's enough now, which really wasn't the case before, there's enough, you know, all of us know you, not all of us, several of us know each other well enough. We should be able to call and say, hey, we got this issue with you guys, let's sit down and talk.
And I don't want there to be like any sort of bad blood between the town council and the HOA board. Like, we're all volunteers serving the community. And, you know, I think it should just be, there's a clear delineation of like, these are our responsibilities, these are your responsibilities. And like, sometimes we have shared problems, we can come together and work to solve them.
Just like the metro districts were dissolved and responsibility went to the town, I really believe we're gonna need a ballot issue. That would be the cleanest way of doing it, to dissolve the town's responsibility and put it on the HOA. I think it would be the.
I I think.
So we should probably talk about that.
I'm I'm open to it. I think that regardless, regardless of what happens, I think there's gonna need to be some paper drafted that clearly defines who's gonna do what, what are the responsibilities? So then in 25 years, the Rock Creek HOA Board and then the future Superior Town Council can look at that document and be like, those idiots drafted this terrible document that doesn't make any sense. And they'll be flitting over that new document.
You guys would have thrown it away though because some law said that you could after a number of years and we will have thrown it away because we'll be on our, you know, 10th management, management group, so.
And you know, or someone's gonna say that regardless.
No, Kelly will still be mad.
Any attorney looks at a document, they can rip it apart if they want to.
I know.
I'm gonna retire sometime.
Well, as we're as we're going through the process, it's gonna be clear as day.
There you go.
And at least there'll be a record for people to go back and understand what we were talking about. And that's one of the problems also here is we don't have the the benefit of knowing what the Rock Creek Gator Way was doing, knowing what the town board at the town time was doing.
Totally agree.
We saw this stuff.
We talked about Christmas lights, didn't we?
Well, we already agreed we're paying for it.
I think we can, we can finish on that and just say thank you for saving Christmas.
Well.
He was the only Santa there.
Every homeowner I've talked to has said, we love our Christmas lights.
Yeah, everybody does. And I threw a lot of shade at my fellow council members, at them being.
Grinches.
Grinches.
Three years in a row.
I would highly.
Yeah, but I had homeowners come up to me and tell me that they thought the town was doing it.
So I won't identify who it was, but there's someone who is very much on the opposite side of me on airport issues. We found ourselves in violent agreement on a Facebook post about Christmas lights. And we were, I think, both sort of shocked.
We do think you're paying too much for your lights.
Yeah, you need to go out for a bit.
Everything that government does is just more expensive than it, just by definition.
We got three bids and we're, ours was better than them.
You wanna do the rest of the town?
We'll see how they turn out.
Yeah.
As long as you pay us to do it.
That's by all means.
I just wanna, I I wanna say, when we started this meeting, it felt very prickly and cold in here. And it doesn't feel like that anymore. I know we didn't like get to all the answers, but this was, thank you for being, showing up.
Hundred percent. Same here.
I would propose that we have three to four meetings a year.
Well, and under our rules, it's fine to do it at like Ban Bay. I guarantee we'll make even more progress in that kind of forum than we did here.
I mean, we just need to get, put a camera. Meet in different places, you just need to record it.
I voted under the table.
I support that.
Yeah, I'm open to alternate venues. This is a question as a citizen, not as a board member. What is the plan with the landscape fee? If you're saying it's unsustainable and eating out of the general fund? Well, we've, that's why we went through the the kind of study, the great study that we did this year was to try to correct the problems with it.
Will there be an increase in the?
Without the fences.
Was an increase recognized in the budget for next year?
Yes. Yeah, it was like 11% or something.
I think we had, I thought it was nine for 2026 and then it was like 11 for 2027.
It's gonna take a couple of years to get to the point where it's on a sustainable track.
Oh, by the way, I had a number of homeowners that thanked you for coming back to our original, your original contractor, the one you changed to.
Fergus.
Yeah, everybody loves Fergus.
Yeah, they let us.
But they didn't like the other one.
They were more economical. Sometimes you get what you pay.
Oh, they want, they want, they're willing to pay more for Fergus. And 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 by the way, their crew members are basically.
Hundred percent. Everybody loves Fergus, they're like the best contractor that we could have.
We ask them for all kinds of, out of the north.
They were super helpful with the fire recovery, you know, they helped people out with debris and plantings and so many different things.
They weren't even being paid for, like they would drive by and see volunteers weeding one of the fire lots and they would haul it all away, you know, for free just because they wanted to help, so they're amazing, best.
They're good people.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you, guys.
Let's continue the conversation. You know how to reach us, town council at superiorcolorado.gov. Goes to all of us.